I would like to call this meeting to order for the City Council Meeting of May 21st, 2019. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Cordero?
Here.
Councilmember Moats?
Here.
Councilmember Soto?
Here.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Here.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Here. Our first order of business is a proclamation and Councilmember Moats will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I'm going to make a proclamation for Public Works Week. Whereas the City Council of the City of Santa Maria has always supported the role of the Department of Public Works as a vital ingredient to the community and an integral part of the residents' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an informed community is vital to the continued operation of public work systems and programs such as the production and delivery of clean water, wastewater collection and treatment, stormwater collection, treatment and control, solid waste collection and disposal, streets and highways, public transit, public buildings, and fleet services, and whereas the health and safety and comfort of the community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these services and facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of the public works officials, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the residents' attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, Alice Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria hereby recognizes the week of May 19th to 25th, 2019, as National Public Works Week in the City of Santa Maria, and call upon all residents and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing public works and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. And to accept this will be Roger Olds, our own Santa Maria Municipal Principal Civil Engineer.
I was going to say, you're supposed to say something, Roger.
Do I need to just turn this on, or is it already on? I've never spoken from this mic. So, thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council for recognizing Public Works and National Public Works Week. Since 1960, APWA has been celebrating National Public Works Week to celebrate and bring awareness to the efforts of the men and women who work in public works. We need this because generally, when we do our jobs well, and, you know, a lot of times we do, no one really notices because things just work. You know, the roads are smooth, the signals work, the water runs, your toilet's flush. So, we do need to kind of, you know, bring attention to ourselves sometimes. So, the way City Santa Maria is organized, we not only have our Public Works Department, but we also have Utilities Department. So, from Public Works, we have Engineering, Streets, Facilities, Fleet, and Transit, and with Utilities, they handle Water Resources, Sewer Collection, Solid Waste, and Regulatory Compliance. And together, we do, we build and maintain a good quality of life for the City of Santa Maria and the Central Coast. So, and that is our passion. If we weren't passionate about it, we wouldn't work as hard as we do. And one thing that should also be mentioned is that Public Works employees are, and Utilities employees, are also, to an extent, first responders. Whenever there's a natural disaster or whatnot, usually they are the first ones on the scene, and they're the last ones to leave. They're not gone until everything is set back right and the infrastructure is back in working order and things actually work. So, I just want to bring that to everyone's attention as well. So, bottom line is, everyday quality of life starts with public works, and in Santa Maria, that's also Utilities Department as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Olds. Our next order of business is a presentation of the Gem Award, and our City Manager, Mr. Sil will be making that presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the Council. It's my pleasure tonight to make this presentation. Since 2006, the city has recognized outstanding employees through its Going the Extra Mile Award. We call it the Gem Award, and the criteria for that are exhibiting effective leadership on specific assignments, demonstrating positive service to a customer or coworker, going above and beyond the call of duty, showing special initiative, creativity, teamwork, cost containment efforts, and entrepreneurial spirit in providing a high level of customer service and consistently embracing the city's service standards. This is the 36th Gem Award being bestowed by the city, and it's a high honor for an individual to receive this, as the city has about 700 employees on payroll. This award recipient tonight we're recognizing, Philip Cinco. This gentleman. So, he took over the lead on our recent H-2A efforts, and it was a complex process with much community and stakeholder engagement. It required expertise in the law and in working to develop consensus. It's a, as I mentioned, complex and technical undertaking, and it was in addition to his regular duties before and after the retirement of the City Attorney in December 2018. And we have, in the award tonight, I can read that, it's the Going the Extra Mile Award hereby granted to Philip Cinco. He took the lead for the city in researching the challenges and opportunities to create a comprehensive framework for H-2A housing regulations. He coordinated a series of five public workshops in summer and fall of 2018, and all of this was performed to be consistent with city, state, and federal laws, the logistical and economic needs of the agricultural community, and recognizing neighborhood concerns, granted this evening, May 21, 2019. And if you think back a year or so ago, I mean, most of us didn't even know what H-2A is, and so Philip led the effort to educate the community and bring forward policy options for the council to adopt. So, it was a big effort, and we want to recognize Philip for his work.
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, ladies and gentlemen, I'm usually not at a loss for words. I am a lawyer, after all. However, I am humbled by this award. I certainly did not expect it. It was, it was a lot of work, but it was, it was quite rewarding to lead this effort, and I'm glad that, I'm surprised but pleased that my contribution was recognized. And that's really all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Cinco, because we know, none of us knew, well, at least up here on the dais, you certainly knew more than we did about the H-2A housing and how it educated not just us, but the community that came out to the meetings and the forums that we had. So, thank you very much. That was such a value to us. The next item on our agenda will be the public comment period. Madam Clerk, would you please read the criteria for public comment?
This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed session items, or matters not otherwise scheduled on the printed agenda this evening. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Direction to staff may be given, however, state law does not allow action to be taken by the City Council on matters not on the printed agenda this evening. Speakers will be allowed to submit a request-to-speak form once the mayor, I'm sorry, my script, the public will be able to submit requests until the mayor has closed public comment session. Also, I will be, I'm announcing that the Clerk's Office received a written communication unrelated to items on the agenda this evening. This communication was from Assemblyman Jordan Cunningham conveying the importance of fluoridated water and his concern that the city has opted out of its program. He requested that the city immediately resume the water fluoridation program. Copies were provided to the City Council via email, and Madam Mayor, we have 12 requests to speak.
Okay. Are they all on the same subject?
No.
Daniel Swanson, followed by Dr. Hendrick Gonzalez, followed by Jennifer McMurray.
Well, good evening, everybody. I feel very fortunate to live in Santa Maria, and this is my second bite of the apple. I was here a month ago on rent stabilization with the entire city of Santa Maria. Tonight, I'm limiting that. I'm saying I want rent stabilization to one of the two most vulnerable groups in society, children first, senior citizens. So, I'm asking for rent stabilization for the seven senior parks under your jurisdiction in Santa Maria. And the reason that I feel that this needs to be addressed is that I'm also a realtor, and I've represented a lot of people that have had to move, and people that have lived there for up to 27 years at Guadalupe, if I'm speaking from my experience, in Rancho Buena Vista. We own the homes, we have space rent, and it's been going up 300, over 300% faster than the Southern California CPI, and even more so because a lot of people are in their 1780s and don't have a retirement plan, just Social Security. They're getting by, but when the owner is receiving a 350% increase versus the CPI increase, the Social Security increase, each year the people are tightening their belt, tightening their belt, and after three or four years, they're gone. And I don't think that's right, especially when those could be your parents or potentially even yourselves living there. Not that it would necessarily be you, but I'm saying, and we're also voting members in Santa Maria, whereas the owner doesn't even live in Santa Maria, not even in the state, but he lives in another state. Number two, or number three, the biggest thing that I can tell you is that the topic that I'm talking about is probably one of the two most important topics to be addressed in the, not only Santa Maria, but in the state. So, I mean, we can keep on looking elsewhere, but it needs to be addressed. And I'm trying to, if I had nine minutes, I would give you a very emotional story about some of these residents. Unfortunately, I have to stick to the data, which doesn't really move, move you as much. But we need, we need to be able to have this on the agenda where we have a conversation about this. We are currently in negotiations with the owner, and here's the frustrating part. Of the items that were on there, we've easily negotiated the non-monetary issues, but when it comes to the monetary issues, they're playing, they're playing a game with us because they realize that they don't have to do anything, and I mean the owner, and he has the number one real estate attorney in Santa Maria representing him. And all they have to do is wait it out, and the bottom line is, it's not a bilateral negotiation, it's a unilateral, because we do not have the ability to pick up the mobile homes and move them elsewhere. Where are we going to take them? So, unless the city steps in and actually helps us, and I know you've been behind the scenes, kind of observing it, and I appreciate that, but we really, really need to get this on the agenda, and as opposed to having his minimum increases where he could get a 350% increase over what the CPI is, we'd like to have a CPI increase. I realize it's my time.
Thank you, Dr. Swanson.
But please, in your heart, you know I'm right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Gonzalez, followed by Jennifer McMurray, followed by Glenn Prescott.
Yes, I wish to defer my time to some really important people that can...
I'm sorry, Mr. Gonzalez, your time is your time.
Okay.
Okay.
Then I can speak then.
You have three minutes, and that's yours.
Okay. Okay, then, we, we just want to talk about fluoridation in Santa Maria. It's been a stop. I'm a dentist here in this community, and I pro-prevention, and I believe this is one of the most easiest and inexpensive way to prevent cavities in children and in adults. We are trying to put that back. I, I just want for you to consider that. They've been proved for years, since 1945, how important is the fluoridation in the waters. More than 74% of United States has fluoride in the water, and there are a lot of proof that it helps reduce the cavities in children and in adults. Every dollar that we put in there, it means $38 saving for the patient in this case. And also, as you know, our community has a lot of dental and medical that has been paying, the state's been paying for the service, and since we put fluoride in our water in Santa Maria, the reduction of cavities and emergency and a dental field has been tremendously. That was stopped last year in August, and I just want that to be back, just to help our community in their dental prevention. That's all that I have to say.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Jennifer McMurray, followed by Glenn Prescott, followed by Howard Pollock.
I was originally instructed to do this during public comment, but I believe I need to speak during 5B.
Would you say it again?
On the agenda, 5B.
5B?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Glenn Prescott, followed by Howard Pollock, followed by Mary Ellen Reese.
If I could just ask the Clerk to hold off on pushing the button. Now, I've got 30 seconds for a public service announcement. I just wanted to let you know something I think we all share together. We're all, we're a tremendous community of giving, and we all know about the Elks Rodeo Queen Contest and what that does, and you're all involved with it. I just want to kind of give you a little example of it, because this Thursday, our Coines Club is going to be giving out $35,000 in scholarships. We're also going to be making an additional $20,000, I believe, in short order to the commitment we already made in partnership with the city for the handicap playground up at Prescott Park. So, I think it's good for us to all hear what's happened to some of this money, how it cycles back in the community, and what we do with it, and I think we should all feel good about it. Okay, push the button. And thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, yes. Madam Mayor and City Council members, I came to Santa Maria in 1989 with the Air Force after spending 21 years as a dentist, and I've practiced in this town for the last 24 years, and I've been practicing for 45 years. I'm very grateful to live here. I love this city, and I love serving this city. And I have to admit that I often brag to both people in the city as well as friends of mine from, from far away about the city government and the City Council, and I'm not schmoozing with you. I really, I've always believed that, and I love to let people know that. In 2002 to 2004, I did meet probably the biggest challenge of my professional life, when I was trying to present the city with the will and the ability to fluoridate its water. We covered every gamut you can think of to help a city guide through this process, and it was a very democratic exercise. It involved many council agendas because this thing was layered, and we never could get it off the agenda for a long time. It included a lot of radio, TV, talk show opportunities, editorials, open public debate, and finally, a ballot measure. And so, we had to go into a full campaign mode and repeat all that over again. A lot of door hanging in the neighborhood. Finally, when it was approved, we managed to get a grant of $400,000 from the California Endowment Fund as goodwill to pay for the installation of the fluoride equipment and the first year's worth of materials. We're here to ask you to turn that back on. It got turned off last October without hardly any notice. In fact, I think it was really slipped by, and I have good reason to say that. I don't think that the City, City Council was very aware of it. Yes, you signed it, all right? You signed a report that's 365 pages, and this was a one-line item on page 143, so I don't blame you if you missed it. I've talked to three of already who didn't know about it, so I know you missed it, and I would have missed it myself even looking for it, because I'm not going to read 363 pages of a report. But now here we are, it's been pulled, and we want to see it put back. We understand that it was done for cost-saving measures back then, when the city was very strapped for funds, but we have reason to believe that better days are already starting to take place now, and that possibly this can be reconsidered. And now I'd like you to hear a panel of people from all manner, all experts, that I think will fill in the picture for you on this important situation. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Prescott. Howard Bullock, followed by Mary Ellen Reese.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. My name's Howard Pollock. I represent the California State Department of Public Health, Office of Oral Health. I am fluoridation consultant for that office, and also I am a spokesperson for the American Dental Association on fluoridation. I'm here because of the fluoridation issue. We believe that fluoridation should be reinstated. It's of great benefit to children and adults, as you've heard. And more than two-thirds of Californians now who are served by public water supplies have access to fluoridated water, including the cities of Los Angeles, San Diego, most of San Diego County. The Bay Area has been, that is, the San Francisco, Oakland, San Jose Bay Area has been fluoridated for many decades. We believe that with the thousands of water districts across the country fluoridating, using the same fluoride additives as we use here, it is a safe practice. The water operators are well-trained, and they have access to a lot of information through the American Water Works Association that supports and endorses water fluoridation. And I just wanted to be here to support that effort. Thank you very much.
Mr. Pollock, Ms. Waterfield has a question. No discussion, but a question.
Just a question. Does the processing of water softeners, or reverse osmosis, or any kind of water filters run through a home, does that diminish any of the fluoridation in the water?
So, to answer the question, reverse osmosis does remove fluoride, as it removes most things, but the typical Brita filter, or Per filter, or putting something in the refrigerator will not remove fluoride. It will remove a lot of other contaminants. Water softening does not change the fluoride concentration of the water.
Okay, thank you very much.
Dr. Moats?
Yeah, I'd like to ask a question. Obviously, you're a good proponent from your point of view. I've been wondering, what's the argument on the other side? If someone were to argue against fluoridation, what would they tell us?
Well, they would toss erroneous facts to you about the possible health hazards that are unrelated to water fluoridation, but are perhaps related to very high levels of fluoride naturally occurring in the water. We have very few of those communities in California, but there are communities around the world and around the United States that have more than what the EPA, the US EPA recommends, that is, a level of about 2/1000. And beyond that, if it's more than that naturally occurring, because every water supply has some natural fluoride in it, Santa Maria has a very low level of natural fluoride, and it's supplemented to come up to the .7 milligrams per liter level. But above 2/1000, then a recommendation is for children not to drink that on a regular basis because of the possibility of developing dental fluorosis, a condition of speckling of the teeth that is not a health hazard. There are many other arguments, and I can refer you to other documents that, for instance, last year, the American Dental Association put out fluoridation facts, and it addresses all of these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Ellen, thank you very much, Mr. Pollock. Mary Ellen Reese.
Thank you for the opportunity to share my experience regarding the positive impact I've seen water fluoridation have on the preschool children I work with in your city. I hope you will reconsider your decision, and please bring back this important service that benefits all the residents, but especially makes a difference for the youngest and most vulnerable population. My name is Mary Ellen Reese. I have worked with the County Education Office for the last 12 years coordinating health affairs and dental services across all of Santa Barbara County. We serve many more children in Santa Maria than any other city by far. I'm not a researcher, statistician, or even a dental professional. I'm just a social worker, but I've worked with volunteer dentists to have them screen children and treat emergencies, and I have seen firsthand the devastating effects of dental disease on our children. I also found something amazing that happened following water fluoridation here in this city. Santa Maria used to be known as the worst for children's dental disease, but then something changed, and it became the best. One year, we had over 60 emergencies, just in the Santa Maria Benita School District's state preschool programs alone. These are little children with large holes in their molars, or all their front teeth rotten and worn down into little nubs. They're in pain and have abscesses. Now, we hardly see them like we used to. Years ago, I had a preschool teacher call me up because she was concerned that her student wouldn't eat and was going hungry at snack time. She was worried there might be a problem with his teeth. I used to get these calls all the time. The little boy was licking the cream cheese off the bagel, but he couldn't take a bite. Can you imagine being so hungry, but you don't get to eat the snack in your classroom because your teeth hurt too much to bite into it? It broke my heart. All he could do was lick off the cream cheese. I still get calls from Galita, Santa Barbara, and Lompoc, but I don't remember when the last time was I got a call from Santa Maria. Something changed here, and it didn't happen anywhere else. May I please leave copies for the council, mayor, and city manager of a graph I made to show the change? I personally kept records of how many children we screened each year and how many had cavities and emergencies. The number of children we found with cavities dropped in half. The emergencies became rare instead of commonplace. No other city improved like this. As a matter of fact, both Lompoc and Santa Barbara have gotten worse, not better. This only happened here in Santa Maria, coincidentally, the only city in the whole county that started adding fluoride to the water. Santa Maria has been the success story we have been telling now for many years. I wish I had come here to tell it to you sooner. I had no idea anyone was even thinking to stop the fluoride. When I found out, my heart sank. I have no doubt that it made the difference, not because I know the science or have read the national research studies, but because I have seen the difference with my own eyes in the children of Santa Maria. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ava Bueno, followed by Meredith Nash Olds, followed by Joyce Lippman.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Anna Bueno. I'm a, I am a promotora, so I'm going to talk in behalf of all the promotoras and Visionico permiso. Visionico permiso is a nonprofit organization that educates and promotes health, and of course, we're under the umbrella. There are around 4,000 promotoras around California. We are around 100 promotoras here in Santa Barbara County, and what we do, we educate the community. We are kind of their voices. We empower them, we educate them, and of course, we promote advocacy for them. We have been witnesses in collaborating with the schools and seeing how many kids suffer from cavities and things like that, and we've seen the difference between the fluoride and now that they're had the fluoride. I'm personally a teacher too, and then I can see the difference. I'm a preschool teacher. It breaks my heart when I see my little ones suffering from cavities, and of course, not having a lot of help. Like I said, I'm a promotora, and I just try to educate and advocate them, and what else I can say? So, thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bueno. Meredith Nash Olds, followed by Joyce Lippman, followed by Joseph Mercandonte.
Good evening, City Council and members of the public. My name is Meredith Nash Olds, and I'm the Oral Health Program Coordinator with the Santa Barbara County Public Health Department. I'm here today to represent the Public Health Department on behalf of the Director and the Health Officer. The department had sent a letter to the City of Santa Maria in January of this year regarding the request to resume water fluoridation within the city, and I'm here to restate the contents of that letter. The Santa Barbara Public Health Department has a vested interest in the oral health of the residents in Santa Barbara County. We improve the oral health of residents by increasing oral health knowledge, improving access to care, and conducting dental screenings and fluoride varnish events for schoolchildren. Our mission is to improve the health of the residents. Our mission is to improve the health of our communities by preventing disease, promoting wellness, and ensuring access to needed health care, and maintaining a safe and healthy environment. The City of Santa Maria has been our valued partner in promoting oral health, and we thank you for being the leader in the municipalities throughout our community. Residents of Santa Maria have benefited from fluoridated water for over a decade, when the city began fluoridation in 2005. However, it has come to our attention that the City of Santa Maria is no longer fluoridating its water supply. As you are aware, community water fluoridation is recognized by the U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention as one of the 10 great public health achievements of the 20th century. When a community stops fluoridating their water, local residents spend more money on decay-related dental problems. Every $1 invested in fluoridation saves an average of $20 in unnecessary dental treatment costs. Therefore, we urge the City of Santa Maria to resume water fluoridation. We look forward to your continued leadership in the municipalities throughout the county. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. One minute. Dr. Moats has a question of you.
Question. So obviously, you want us to put fluoride back in our water, but what about the water in Santa Barbara, and Lompoc, and Galida, and all the other cities in the unincorporated area? What are you doing to try and encourage them to fluoridate their water?
I can only speak on what I have been directed to in this letter. I'm the Oral Health Program Coordinator, so we've been directed by the State of California to educate the entire county on water fluoridation. So they fall in our jurisdiction.
Thank you. Thank you. Joyce Lippman, followed by Joseph Mercardante, followed by Elizabeth Schneider.
Good evening. My name is Joyce Lippman. I'm a resident of the City of Santa Maria. I also work at the Central Coast Commission for Senior Citizens Area Agency on Aging. And in 2002, our agency took a position, strong position, to support fluoridation in the City of Santa Maria, and we actively worked with the Coalition to secure the success of the ballot measure. We also recently just re-looked at the issue, and again, the council took a position to strongly support reinstatement of fluoridation in the City of Santa Maria. So you may wonder, in addition to children, older adults are a significant part of our population, and surprisingly, many seniors move to this area just assuming that we are fluoridated, and are quite surprised to learn that we are no longer fluoridated. So fluoridation is very protective of dental decay, not only in children, but also in older adults. And older adults have specific dental issues as a result of gumline, recession, medications that may cause dry mouth, and other issues affecting the saliva flow. Sounds too technical for me. But all of these issues lead to older adults being specifically susceptible and vulnerable to the lack of the adequate level of fluoridation. And it's terribly important when you are an adult or an older adult to have good oral health, teeth, and all of that. So I want to just join with everyone here today to thank you for the opportunity to speak, and to urge you to put this item on a future meeting so that you can reconsider your budget and add the cost of fluoridation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lippman. Dr. Mercardante.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Councilmembers. My name is Joseph Mercadante. I'm a dentist at Community Health Centers of Central Coast. I operate a school program called Brush, Brush, Brush. It is a dental prevention and nutrition program targeting first, second, and third graders. You all heard Dr. Prescott get up here and talk about what happened 17 years ago. It was a two-to-three-year effort to get water fluoridation implemented in Santa Maria. It wasn't a spur-of-the-moment thought. It was a well-planned campaign where the public voted on this, and it was the will of the community to have this benefit and to improve the quality of life and the oral health of our citizens. Mary Ellen talks about how water fluoridation has decreased the caries rate in children by 15%. You hear one of our prematoras, prematoras come up here and talk about what it means to her children. Are you aware that HERSA has targeted children and prevention of caries in probably the last since 2010, and in trying to eliminate the most common disease of childhood? Six times more common than asthma. Dental caries, cavities. Is there anybody in this room who's ever had a toothache? I see children every day. I go to 11 schools in the Santa Maria Benita School District. HERSA declares Santa Maria children, they're all categorized as high-risk, not all of them, because Hispanic children are considered high-risk because of their ethnicity and socioeconomic What are we going to do about it? Well, you heard all these people get up here. It's been a 17-year effort. The city voted on it. Everybody wanted water fluoride. What happened? That's why we're here tonight. We're here to ask for your help. We need it. Water fluoride has worked in this community, as it has worked in other communities outside the United, throughout the United States and throughout the world. I can tell you a countryside, but in Bolivia, where I went on a dental humanitarian trip, second poorest country in the Western Hemisphere, they wanted to know how they could get water fluoridation. They were putting it in the salt, the second-most common way. It's ineffective. It's not as effective as water fluoridation. Water fluoridation is the most effective, cost-efficient, inefficient way to stop caries, way to stop this disease that's in our community.
Thank you very much, doctor. Appreciate it.
Thank you. So we're here to ask your help. Thank you.
Elizabeth Schneider, followed by Gloria Ortiz.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and your Council. My name is Beth Schneider, and I've lived in the Casa del Rio Mobile Estates Park for 18 years. Tonight, I'm speaking in support of an enforceable rent stabilization ordinance in the City of Santa Maria. As a member of the Casa del Rio Residents Lease Negotiation Committee, I can speak firsthand about the need for an enforceable rent stabilization ordinance. The Casa del Rio owners are proposing a 10% increase in our lease payments to bring our rents up to comparable parks, three of which are not even in the city, they're in the county, and a 2.5% annual increase based on the Urban Consumer Price Index. That means that the rent would increase over $100 in the first year of the 10-year lease period for our 250-plus residents. That's a huge increase for residents living on fixed incomes. Many people rely on Social Security and their retirement pensions as their only sources of income, although more and more seniors are continuing to hold jobs in order to, excuse me, to survive. The 2019 COLAs certainly didn't increase by $100 per month for Social Security and most pensions collectively. Please help protect our vulnerable seniors, disabled, and mentally challenged people by directing staff to draft an enforceable rent stabilization ordinance and pass it before the end of 2019. It's the right and fair thing for your council and mayor to do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Gloria Ortiz.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and all the board here, you know, the members and the people here. I do want to say that I had make police reports for scam fraud of this property in Guadalupe, and I've been looking for help, even consumer reports. I need help to get this resolved. I've been waiting for years on this scam fraud, and I haven't got any resolution. And as I'm saying, through this scam fraud, even Social Security, SSA money, that has even, you know, Social Security through the fraud of this property, I don't get my money. I'm not getting my Social Security, that is, SSA money. I cannot live with no of my money. And that's the reason I'm here also, because through this problem of the fraud of the property, please, I need your help, Mayor, to...
Okay, Ms. Ortiz, if it has something to do with the City of Guadalupe, you have to go to them. If it's fraud, you can go to the District Attorney's Office.
I already did.
But the City of Santa Maria cannot help you. You'll have to go to the District Attorney's Office.
Oh, yeah, I turn in to them everything, too.
Okay.
To District Attorney's Office, to police station, and nobody has give, you know, a resolution to this scam fraud, because even my money is a problem to get my money.
Okay. Mr. Stillwell, could you give her a number to call so that she can make contact?
Can I have a consumer, is there a consumer report?
Pardon?
Oh, Mr. Vandykamp will give you a number. Okay, consumer report I need.
So he will help you with that?
I turn in all my evidence.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes, to the District Attorney. I turn in my evidence, and I turn it in to the police station also.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Ortiz. Mr. Vandykamp will help you.
Okay.
Before we move on, Mr. Stillwell, did you have any comments?
[inaudible].
Okay. Moving on now to the consent calendar. Madam Clerk, could you please read item number three?
Routine items are presented for City Council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendar is approved by roll call vote with one motion. These items are discussed only on the request of council members. Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, as part of Agenda Item 3C, labor agreements, staff was notified late this afternoon that the Santa Maria City Firefighters Local 2020 has requested their agreement be pulled from consideration this evening. Therefore, it's recommended that the City Council pull Item 3C for a separate vote amended to exclude the Santa Maria Firefighters Local 2020 agreement.
Okay, thank you.
We need a motion on that, Mayor.
Well, we can make a motion on the entire consent with the exception of 3C.
Okay.
Okay.
So moved.
Okay. Is there a second? Does anyone want anything pulled to begin with from the consent calendar?
Second.
Okay. Okay. So we have a motion and a second to adopt the consent calendar with the exception of 3C. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Cordero.
Aye.
Councilmember Moats.
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield.
Aye.
Councilmember Soto.
Aye.
And Madam Mayor Patino.
Aye. Okay, 3C, as amended.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Item C3, and we're going to do it in two different votes. We're going to separate the Santa Maria Firefighters Union Local 2020. So I'd like to go ahead and make a motion for 3C without the Santa Maria Firefighters Union Local 2020.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Sure.
I have a motion and a second to adopt 3C with the exception, the amendment, as the Local Firefighters 2020.
And Madam Mayor, I'd like to also make a motion that we are going to exclude, we're going to pull Santa Maria Firefighters Union Loco 2020 contract from Item 3C.
That's what I thought the motion was. Yeah, right. Okay, and a second. Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield.
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero.
Aye.
Councilmember Moats.
Aye.
Councilmember Soto.
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino.
Aye. Next order of business is a presentation. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will receive a presentation from the Santa Maria Valley Chamber of Commerce regarding the Hourglass Regional Economic Development Effort.
And Mr. Stillwell, would you like to do the introductions?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So Diablo Canyon is scheduled to close, and there's a number of businesses in Santa Maria and in the region that support the operations of Diablo Canyon indirectly. And if the upcoming closure had area businesses question what next steps might make sense to keep a vibrant economy in our region? Last fall, a group of business and community leaders identified an effort to look over our regional economy and opportunities ahead. And they called the project, the Hourglass Project. They've been moving forward rapidly since then, and we'd like to provide them the opportunity tonight to present where they are and ideas going forward. Glenn Morris from our Santa Maria Valley Chamber of Commerce has been a key stakeholder of this effort, and he'll lead things off.
Good evening, Mr. Morris.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. How are you? Members of the Council, it's a pleasure to be with you this evening to, as City Manager Stillwell mentioned, to give you an update on the Hourglass Project. As you know, the Chamber of Commerce has the responsibility, is your key partner, to do economic development work and business attraction and retention here in the Santa Maria City and in northern Santa Barbara County. I think we have long understood that business doesn't stop and start at the lines we draw on maps and call cities or counties. The economy is truly a regional economy. Our residents work up and down the Central Coast. Residents of other neighboring communities work in our city, in our businesses, and for the city itself. So economic activity flows throughout the region. That seems really obvious when you say it, right? But sometimes it takes saying the obvious to get us started on the right path. The challenge is always in taking what seems obvious and making it real. So a couple of years ago, even really before the announcement of Diablo, we began dialogue with a number of our neighboring communities around how do we really, how do we work on the economy on a regional basis? Before the Diablo announcement, we already were concerned about the number of businesses in our region who, for whatever reason, found themselves in a situation where they couldn't continue to operate in the exact facility or circumstances they found themselves. And often, what we would discover after the fact is that, you know, they might have looked in their immediate vicinity, and not finding a solution there, they often would then look very far away, right? And so many of those businesses would end up leaving either the region or even the state. And that was really what got us started in this conversation, was trying to understand how we could work with the communities around us to ensure that if a business couldn't continue to operate in one city, they could, we could work with them to find a solution in the next city over. But we would at least keep their jobs here, we would keep their community support here, we would keep their economic impact here. So that's really what brought us to the conversation. The Diablo announcement certainly poured a little fuel on that fire and accelerated the conversation. And so about a year ago, as Mr. Stillwell mentioned, we formally joined with a number of organizations around the region to try and bring together a formal, structured approach to regional economic development. We call that the Hourglass Project, and it's my pleasure this evening to introduce the CEO of the Hourglass Project, Melissa James, and I'm going to ask her to kind of bring you up to speed on the work that's been done in the last seven, eight months, and the work that we're engaged in right now, what's coming in the next few months as we continue to move forward on this effort. So with your permission, I'll invite Melissa to take the podium.
Thank you, Glenn, and thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. It's just a pleasure to be here with you today. Glenn kind of set the stage really well, and kind of the genesis of the Hourglass Project, kind of what it is and why we need it, and I'm going to put a little more detail into that conversation. You know, at the high level, the Hourglass Project is a new regional economic development organization looking at fostering a vibrant economy from Vandenberg to Camp Robert's. So that encompasses 12 cities and two counties across what we call the Central Coast Superregion. So, you know, just kind of thinking about where we came from, it's really a group of, you know, business and civic leaders that really saw a gap in our region's economic development efforts. We have wonderful economic development efforts that are happening across the region at the community and the local level, but there's not really a unified, comprehensive approach at the regional level. at the regional level, and that's kind of the space in which we are filling. So what is the approach and why do we need this? When a lot of these business and community leaders came around the table, they looked at kind of where we want to go. We are a region of a half a million people, and we want to ensure that there are jobs, opportunity, and economic prosperity that we're offering for our current residents and our residents long into the future. And as you look at some of the challenges or the opportunities that we need to seize on a regional level, it was clear that we didn't have the infrastructure to do that. We didn't have the capacity as a region to do that. And so the approach that we believe that we need to be taking is these three things. We need to be working regionally across political boundaries, across our jurisdictional silos. We need to be private sector-led. When you think about economic opportunity, job creation, it's the private sector that are the job creators, and they really need to be at the forefront of leading any sort of job creation or economic development strategy that we have to link and network the business community across the Central Coast. And then we need to be action-oriented. We believe kind of studying and researching challenges and coming up with recommendations really falls short of what we need to really make an impact on the lives of people. And so we believe we need to be working to implement those solutions and drive opportunity moving forward. So, you know, who are the people, you know, that have kind of been around the table, you know, thinking critically and trying to do some of the heavy lifting around this? We have a founding board of directors that represents CEOs from chambers across the region kind of at the table. We have Cal Poly, we have the private sector, we have a tourism organization, Visit Slow Cal from Slow County. So a lot of different perspectives that do economic development-type activities within their organizations that have said, we need to find a way in which we all work together to foster a vibrant region. We also have a group of, you know, business leaders that, and this is just, you know, some of the mix, that we're calling our champions, and those people that are saying, you know, we really want to put our name and our efforts behind something like this. And so there's really been a groundswell of kind of community support. And so what are we going to do? How are we going to kind of drive this, you know, economic opportunity agenda forward? Where we're really kind of focusing in, in the short term, is around head of household job creation, looking at how we can create more high-paying jobs to meet the needs of our current and future residents. And I know, thinking about this as a strategic goal for our organization, you know, this is something that your council has identified as a high priority and a goal for your city, so it aligns perfectly. As we think about how we go about, you know, creating job, the types of jobs that we would want that would offer family-sustaining wages in our community, we believe we need to be working together across a multitude of lines of effort or activities, looking at things like infrastructure and housing and education and business expansion. So we're going to be kind of kicking off over the next, you know, three to six months on a strategic project. We've brought in a consulting partner, Deloitte, who's a kind of a world-renowned partner that is really going to help us walk through a process that's going to create a shared vision, a strategy, and then an action roadmap for how are we going to come together as a region of the 12 cities and two counties and a half a million people and have a kind of a common vision for where we want to go and what we're going to do to achieve it? How are we going to work together practically as a region? And so over the next three to six months, we're going to kind of detail that out. And then I'm going to invite up a partner in the organization with me, our VP of Strategy, Andrew Haukman, is going to give a couple more details into the project moving forward.
Madam Mayor, council, and Mr. Silwell, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Thanks to Glenn and Melissa. So I'm not going to go over this slide in any kind of detail because the people in the back can read it just fine. But, oh wait, yeah, it's a little bit small. Let me just capture this with a few brief sentences. What we're trying to do regionally is align priorities and goals that, for the most part, our local communities already have. And like Melissa said, we're engaging with a world-renowned partner that will allow us to kind of speak externally as well to state and federal government, to bring to bear the investment and innovative financing approaches that can allow us to get at the really, really big issues that we face long into the future. But there's a lot of stuff that we can do right now that will have a big impact on our economy. And every part of our region is a little bit different. We have some pretty diverse identities. If you start from Camp Robert to the Paso Robles area, and you go south to the northern Santa Barbara County region here in Santa Maria, where our vision is that everyone has the opportunity here to choose their own path and reflect the best version of their community going forward and to take advantage of the big opportunities. And so what you can see in this process is everyone having a seat at the table regionally, leaders that are the right ones to come forward to help us develop this regional action plan and strategy. And really, it'll come down to a lot of asset mapping, like are there rail spurs? Is there capacity for airport development, ag tech, all of the things that are historic and traditional about our communities, but also looking forward into the future about creating some of these high-paying jobs in healthcare and tech, all of these things that we really want, and we need to crack the code and figure out how to do it, and working together across the region is how we can go about doing that. But it's about choosing the right number of things that will have an impact and not doing more than what we have the energy and resources to tackle. And so right here, this kind of captures what I was talking about with, we need to have everybody at the table to work on developing this action plan and roadmap, and we're going to be doing it very rapidly because we don't want to spend a lot of time just talking and strategizing. We want to get to the things that we know that we need to be doing that will make a big impact now and long into the future, and we need to get at doing it. And some of the things that will help us do that is, you know, ways to get at the big cost items that really have troubled us, like innovative financing for infrastructure, working together regionally to share costs for procurement and things like that. But importantly, to make any of this work, especially regionally across jurisdictional lines, is working collaboratively and having a governance framework that will allow all of us to understand what our roles are in getting all of this done. And our timeline here, it's a little bit difficult to see, but over the next three months, we're going to go through a process that will engage everybody in the communities at some level, so starting with a poll, business surveys, but also seeking out a large number of key community members, business leaders, government, to help us determine what needs to occur and what the priorities ought to be for each area of the subregion or the subregions in our larger superregion. And by the end of August, we'll have this action plan and roadmap that will be measurable, actionable, that will reflect each of our communities' desires, both tackling the opportunities that exist now and things on a distant planning horizon, 10, 20 years into the future. And to conclude here, I'm going to turn it over to Melissa, but the idea here is that what's good for the Central Coast is also good for Santa Maria, so that, you know, a rising tide lifts all boats. And some of the things that Santa Maria is already very robust and already working very hard and succeeding in doing is the city's relationship with CEO of the Santa Maria Valley Chamber, Glenn Morris, and being very tactical and action-oriented in economic development, and seeing these opportunities that exist, like, for example, when a company outgrows opportunities in San Luis Obispo, and instead of going to, you know, Los Angeles or Wyoming or Idaho, that they see and understand, and they're engaging with a network of practitioners to take advantage of opportunities that we already have here in the region, that Santa Maria will welcome with open arms, you know, an expansion of a mind body, for example. And so I'd like to conclude there and turn this back over to Glenn.
So really, that wraps up the presentation. I just want to highlight that last slide again. You know, Santa Maria brings an awful lot of assets to this conversation. You heard him talk about asset mapping and things like physical infrastructure with the airport, the railroad, you know, just, you know, land to build on, people who want to go to work. We bring an awful lot to that conversation, but we don't bring the whole entire solution for every single business challenge, and we need a partner. We need a number of partners, and that's what we think that this brings to us, is another tool that we can use to really create a vibrant economy for our local residents. So with that, Mayor, I just would, we'd be willing to take any questions that you and the members of the council have tonight.
Any questions for Mr. Morris?
I have one. Can you name, because I don't remember them all, but maybe you do. Can you name the companies that have expanded from San Luis Obispo into Santa Maria?
I'm not going to pull the names off, but I'll give you two examples just in the last three to four months. There's a business that they do, you know, sporting good equipment, a lot of that is, yeah, Ospea, correct, a lot of that is delivered via, sold and delivered via the internet. Interesting fact, they're, as they make the move, so while they're still in Slow County, they're the largest UPS shipper in San Luis Obispo County. You can imagine UPS thinks they're a pretty important partner, and so they took them on a national tour and took them to places all around the country where UPS has a strong infrastructure presence and tried to convince them to build right next door to a UPS, you know, hub. But when they really came down to it, they looked at their employees, right? They looked at the people that worked for them and said, where do they live? And what they discovered was an awful lot of them live in northern Santa Barbara County or just across the river on the bluff in Napa. And so they said, well, maybe we ought not disrupt all of their lives. And so they took another look at the region and found a solution here in Santa Maria that they're thrilled with. The second one that I would point out just briefly is a dental supply company that is in the process, they're still on escrow on a building here in Santa Maria, but they will be bringing another set of jobs into the community. And again, much of those things happen because we now have the relationships that when they talk to a local, you know, economic developer, it's not working, we can't find it. They said, can I introduce you to a friend in a neighboring community? And that goes both ways, obviously, but those are the kinds of things that we want to see many more of.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Morris.
Thank you.
And I have a request to speak on this item. Andy Caldwell?
Members of the council, I'm Andy Caldwell, representing COLAB. This issue that they're bringing up is near and dear to my heart. It's one of the reasons COLAB was created 28 years ago. And the bottom line is, I've been warning, nobody wanted to hear it, but I've been warning for over 20 years that Lompoc and Santa Maria were going to have a problem with permanent urban underclass slash ghetto in the making. And why is that? Well, what we started to do with the creation of COLAB is fight for retaining manufacturing and industrial jobs. I used to be the Industrial Relations Manager of Union Sugar, and I hired people from the field to the factory, from seasonal to year-round, no benefits to benefits, because they didn't have to speak English, they didn't have to have a high school education to be on a path towards a middle-class income because they could work with their hands. Those are the jobs that have been destroyed in the state of California. So I'm all for mind body, I'm all for rafeon or any of these other high-tech jobs because they pay great wages. But I've always been concerned about how poor people and who maybe language-challenged or education-challenged can become upwardly mobile. And for that, we need blue-collar manufacturing and industrial jobs, the very jobs that California has been seeking to destroy in this state for the last 30-plus years out of overwrought environmental considerations. And the bottom line is, a lot of these efforts, they come up, they're like carrot farmers, but they don't carry any sticks. And the bottom line here is California's made it increasingly difficult for businesses to expand here because we're the highest taxed in the nation. We have the $15 an hour minimum wage coming, we have the California Environmental Quality Act. They are siphoning off water that we have in storage so that we have a permanent drought situation, no matter how much it rains. And look at between Santa Maria and San Luis Obispo, it's bumper-to-bumper traffic mornings and evenings because there's nobody out there to widen that freeway as Santa Maria did. And I was there, I'm on the Measure 8 Oversight Committee, Mayor Lavignino had to bribe the rest of the North County communities to put money into highways and freeways. And so there's a lot of impediments, and these organizations have got to be willing to take on the politics in this state and in this region if they're going to succeed. We may end up with more high-tech jobs, but that's not necessarily what we need. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Morris. Mr. Silwell, any comments? Okay. Thank you very much for the presentation. Thank you. We have a public hearing. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
Yes, the City Council will consider recommendation of the Planning Commission to approve a general plan land use map amendment, zone change to allow for the construction of an 85-unit townhome community on 6.5-acre portion of 7.7-acre site in a planned development convenience center and planned development light manufacturing zoning districts, which is proposed to be changed to a planned development high-density residential and planned development commercial manufacturing districts for the proposed townhome project.
Staff report is to be made by Community Development Director, Mr. Ing.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I will turn the time over to Ned Azair, who's been the project planner for this project.
Excuse me, this is Sarah Monte, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Looks like Wes Cox to me.
That's what I thought.
Okay.
There we go. I thought maybe I had missed something. Okay.
Madam Mayor, I apologize. Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. The item before you is a general plan amendment and zone change. It's located at the southwest corner of Carmen Lane and Blosser Road. The project site consists of four separate parcels that combine together to make the overall project site. Currently, the majority of the parcels, three of them, are vacant with several small buildings located on it, and the final parcel is the existing Quintron site that's located at the southern portion of the project site. It has an existing building and tenant that occupies that site and will remain. The surrounding area consists of single-family residences. To the west, there are apartment complexes located directly north of the project site. And to the east, there is a CHC offices and vacant land that is part of the Betteravio Plaza project for future development. Jimenez Elementary School is adjacent to the project site, and there's a number of multi-tenant industrial buildings located just south of it. Currently, the project site overall has two zoning designations and land use designations. Half of it is neighborhood commercial, the portion that's closest to Carmen Lane and Blosser Road intersection, and a zoned PDCC, which is Planned Development Community Commercial. This has a variety of uses allowed on it, such as small businesses, grocery stores, restaurants, and beauty shops that are intended for neighborhood-serving commercial. And the southern portion of the site is currently zoned PDM1, Planned Development Light Manufacturing, and those are for industrial or manufacturing uses or offices not open to the general public. The applicant states that they've been currently trying to market the site for commercial uses and have had no success in doing so, and so they are proposing a rezone of the site. What's currently being proposed in before the City Council this evening is to rezone a 6.5-acre portion of the overall site, that's shown here in orange, to PDR3, which is Planned Development High Density Residential, and to leave the remnant portion of the site that currently occupies Quintron to PDCM, Planned Development Commercial Manufacturing. The industrial rezone is only so that it would match the surrounding commercial manufacturing zoning districts to the south of it and not leave a segment of M1 solely on this area. Here are some pictures of the existing site. This is a view of the project site on Blosser Road, looking... This is a view of the project site on Blosser Road, looking south and looking to the north. And just north of this site is the Westgate Apartments project on Blosser Road, and the left, the picture here on the left shows what the frontage of that site looks like. The intent is to continue the frontage aesthetic and landscaping of what's just adjacent to this project site. Here is a view of the project site along Carmen Lane. This is, again, looking to the east and west along Carmen Lane, there's an existing sidewalk along the, the frontage currently that will remain, and the project will be developed on the vacant land just to the south of that. Here again is a picture across the street on Carmen Lane of the Westgate Apartments for context of what this looks like in the surrounding community. Again, the idea is to keep a continuity of the project with the surrounding area. Along the western boundary of the project site is a multipurpose trail. This picture on the left is what's adjacent to the project site, and then across Carmen Lane is what continues of that multipurpose trail. This trail connects into the elementary school that's near the project site and the park. And so this is a continuation of what's existing of that multipurpose trail. Here's a site plan of the proposed 85-unit townhomes that will be constructed on the project site. This did have a planned development permit that reviewed the design, configuration, site plan, and layout of the project, along with a tentative tract map that was to subdivide this site into 86 different lots. That was reviewed by the Planning Commission on March 20th and approved. Those were final actions by the Planning Commission. The only action before the City Council this evening is the rezone of the site from the neighborhood-serving commercial and industrial to high-density residential. Now, that planned development permit and that tentative tract map are contingent on the City Council's action on this item. Should the rezone not be approved by the City Council, those two permits will be null and void. The project met municipal code requirements and was reviewed by the Planning Commission for design. Here's an overlay of that site plan with the aerial of what the context will look like in its surroundings. Access will be off of Carmen Lane, there will be no access off of Blosser Road. There will be significant amount of street trees and landscaping constructed on Blosser Road to match what's adjoining at the Westgate Market, or Westgate Apartments just across Carmen Lane. And similarly, on Carmen Lane, there will be street trees and landscaping along that frontage to match what's across the street at Westgate Apartments. There were some concerns from an adjoining neighbor that's just west of the site in the single-family residence that, but the multipurpose trail, they had specific concerns about visibility and screening of visibility into their rear yards. The applicant has made every effort to address those concerns by adding additional screening along the multipurpose trail, by adding large trees and shrubbery to block those views. Here's a schematic of what those line of sites will look like from those adjoining neighbors. And as you can see, the screening would block what visibility the second stories of those residents would have on the existing subdivision to the west. This has been presented to the adjoining neighbors for, for their review and consideration as well. We just wanted the City Council to be aware that those discussions were occurring. Here are exterior elevations of the proposed townhomes. These are two-story townhomes that will be packaged in fourplexes, they will have shared walls, and they will be alley-loaded, meaning that they will have garages in the rear, and their front yards will be a common landscape area in the front that will have amenities such as barbecue areas, landscaping, trellises, and things of that nature. They will also share a community building, which is on the left-hand side of the screen, which will have amenities for the entire Sarah Monte project to use, as well as outdoor open space area and totlot. Here is a floor plan of the units. They are two stories with common living areas on the first floor and then bedrooms on the second floor, which is typical with a two-car garage for each of the units. In addition to the two-car garages, there will be guest parking spaces throughout the area to accommodate for visitors and guests of the subdivision, and they have provided beyond what the parking requirement for the project is. Here's a rendering of these common landscape areas between the residences. Again, as you can see, they'll have picnic tables and benches and barbecue areas, and the front doors open to this park-like setting. Here's a rendering of the community building that's being proposed with their outdoor trellis area and common space, and then a rendering of the entry gate and entrance into the project from Carmen Lane. With that, staff is recommending the City Council adopt a resolution approving the general plan land use map amendment for the Sarah Monte project and introduce an ordinance for first reading and then second reading adoption of the official zoning map amendment for the Sarah Monte project. That concludes staff's presentation. I'm available for any question the City Council may have, as well as Lori Tamarra of Urban Planning Concepts, and the applicant is here and available.
Okay. Are there any questions from council?
I just want to ask your, your feelings about the mitigation of the line of sight thing. Are you satisfied that you've been given a good plan to resolve that?
There were many options explored, and this was generated by the engineer directly of what the heights and line of sight would be, one for the resident as well as the proposed subdivision. I believe this is the best effort to provide the screening necessary. Increasing wall heights would require demolition of adjoining walls along the whole area and rebuilding, and wouldn't necessarily provide the same amount of screening as putting larger screening trees on the project site to block those views. They will take a couple of years to grow, to maturity, however, at that point, they should fully screen their visibility for them.
And whose, whose land is, is the shrubbery or the trees going to be on?
On the project site.
On the project site?
Yes, on the Sarah Monte Townhomes project. So in this graphic, this is the two-story residence that is proposed at Sarah Monte. This is their walkway and their wall. These trees will be planted here. This is the multipurpose trail, and then this is the adjoining neighbor. So all the landscaping and care of that landscaping will be the responsibility of the HOA of the Sarah Monte. So the existing residents would not incur any maintenance issues, that would, that would fall wholly on Sarah Monte Townhomes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. Moes, did you have a question? Okay. Did you, oh, Mrs. Ochoa?
Green space, how much green space?
So a multifamily residential project requires 20% landscaping on the project site. They have exceeded that requirement. As you can see from this site plan, this whole front area will be landscaped, including their retention basins, will be lawn area and open space that can be used. There will be landscaping along the whole perimeter of the project site, as well as landscaping at the front yards of all of these residences. So they have well exceeded their landscape requirements. I believe they have about 27% landscaping when 20% is required.
Any other questions? Okay. The applicant is here. Miss Tamarra?
Good evening, Lori Tamarra with Urban Planning Concepts, and here tonight with me is Barbara Bethel, the owner and developer of the project. She is also the owner and developer of the Montallegre project, which is immediately behind here on the bike trail. Neta and staff have made a good presentation of the context of this project and the effort that's been made to address the design and concerns of the area and also the designing concerns of the city of Santa Maria. I don't want to take much time on this. I do want to recognize the fact that we did meet with the adjacent landowners twice in regards to the concerns of the interface between their project, their yard, their windows, and the bike trail, and then the relationship of this particular project. And Neta, if you could throw up that cross-section again. As you can see, there are five units along this section that are end units. Each one of those units has one window, it's a bedroom window, that would be facing to the west, and we strategically added landscaping along those, those units so that they would screen going, looking down into the bike trail area. As you know, with the existing walls, some of those walls are between, on that Montallegre side, some of those walls are between seven, eight, and nine feet high as they step across the site. So adding more blocks onto that existing wall would probably jeopardize the footing of that wall. And we believe that it's more appropriate to put a green screen up that would serve as a buffer between the two projects, and also recognize that, you know, you already have a separation with the bike trail. We think this is a good solution, and it's a strategic solution for the property. So we're here tonight, first of all, thanking the Planning Commission for their work on the design of the project and the changes. One of the big issues was not taking access on Blosser and configuring the site so that it took access off of Carmen with a secondary access to the driveway for Quintron, and we believe we've met all of the departmental concerns, and we look forward to moving forward with this project and building something that I think the city will be very proud of. One question that was raised recently with this project was, "Why don't you do a commercial site?" Small commercial properties are becoming a real challenge to put something that can be competitive with the bigger projects that are coming into Santa Maria, and the effort that Barbara has done over the last 15 years trying to market this site and do things and put plans and designs and broker it, whatever, it just has not come to fruition. So we are kind of in a situation of either we continue to try on something that might happen with this change in marketing with big boxes as well as Amazon, or we put a project in there that finishes that neighborhood and makes something that everybody can be proud of. So we're here tonight asking for approval of the project.
Thank you.
Thank you. And available for any questions.
Dr. Moes?
Yeah, Miss Tamarra, in terms of blocking the view from one project to the other, what about opaque windows or glass block or something like that that doesn't depend on trees?
That's a possibility. You know, we thought that the green screen would be better. You could look, that the units that are being built would be able to look over the houses that are there but not be completely blocked, but it's a possibility.
It's only one window per house?
Correct, for those end units, yes.
Right.
Mr. Cordero?
Yes, Mayor, I apologize, I neglected to, to let you know that the, that I have spoken to Miss Tamarra regarding the ex parte, and I'm impressed with your idea on the opaque windows, but I think most people want to look out their windows.
They want fresh air coming in.
Just another side, you know.
Yeah, fresh air coming in.
Well, there is another window that they could look out, isn't there? I mean, how many windows are in the bedroom? Just one?
Those end units, there are several windows, but they're more like the bathroom windows, which are high windows. They're not view windows. And then there's the one-bedroom window that needs to be a certain size in height for building code requirements. And those are the ones that we're trying to address with this screening effort.
Ms. Waterfield?
Yes, I have a question, Lori, and it has to do with parking. So the parking situation, are these two-car, two-car garages?
Correct.
And we know families have more than two cars. So the overflow, you have 18 extra parking spaces, is that what I'm counting on the, on the plan?
We have more than that.
You do have more than that?
We have 18 parking spaces that are in parking slots, but we also have parking available between each of the units.
Okay, because I couldn't see that, so that was my concern.
There's 67.
There's 67, okay, thank you. That's good.
Yes, we heard you loud and clear.
Thank you.
I also, at ex parte, I, I met with Miss Tamarra. Any other questions?
Thank you, and we're available for any questions afterwards.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, do we have any written correspondence?
We do not have any written correspondence on this item.
Okay, I'd like to open up the public hearing. Do we have any requests to speak?
We have four.
Four, okay. Judith Monte, followed by Fred Seordia, followed by Lori Tamarra, did you want to, you already spoke. Penny Loudon, good evening, Ms. Monte.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Councilmembers. I'm here to speak in favor of the Sarah Monte project. More than 20 years ago, it was my privilege to be the project manager at Dennis Bethel and Associates. When they first started talking about development on that property, it was not feasible at that time, and since that time, Dennis's widow, Barbara, has worked diligently, you've heard some of the efforts both from Nala and from Lori, so I won't go into it. I did sit down with her and with the Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development about a year ago before she developed the plan for Sarah Monte with the question, "What did the community need from housing that was not currently out there? What's our missing niche?" We just heard from Hourglass Project about the need for housing, and that was Miss Bethel's concern, "What do we need to attract businesses that we're not currently offering?" And the design for her homes came out of that, her homes and her development. What could we provide that would attract businesses to our community? She's worked with the planning department to address and mitigate the needs. I've worked with Barbara over a number of projects and over a number of years, and I think you find her work to be very quality and very tasteful. And that's really what I want to address to you, that a testimonial for the quality of a project, it will be, that it will be something that will enhance the existing community, it should mitigate the existing graffiti and undesirables hanging around in the trail, and create truly a nice community for those that live there and a very desirable enhancement to that corner. If you choose, we can continue to have the ISO that's been out there for 25 years, but I would join Miss Tamarra and Miss Bethel in asking you to approve the rezoning so that the project can move forward.
Thank you. Fred Seordia?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I have a move on request. Respect, please.
Oh, okay, thank you. Penny Loudon?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers.
Good evening.
I'm Penny Loudon, I live at 2020 Trinity Drive, which I'm one of the homes that is behind this project. I'm about in the middle of the street. I bought my home from Barbara Bethel. We stood in the kitchen as I, we looked over to the fence, and she assured me that it would be community commercial, which is, in my mind, a great idea as far as being able to walk or bike to a grocery store, hair salon, an eatery. I'm very disappointed that a project wasn't being able to put together that would be, allow our neighborhood to enjoy that. If, if you looked on a grander scale, from Blosser going west, we have basically zero amenities. We all have to get in our cars and drive somewhere. And I know it's a real plan for the city to try to have, you know, more pedestrian-friendly neighborhoods. We have the Westgate Apartments nearest, and then behind that is all single-family homes, and my whole area and west is single-family homes. On the other side of Blosser, it has become very high-density. I think it was originally zoned for a single-family, but was rezoned and is now two-story, very I am very concerned about the traffic from all those units coming on to Carmen, the driveways from Westgate Apartments and this are going to be offset. The driveways from Westgate Apartments and this are going to be offset. I understand it's been approved, but it's my understanding that offset driveways like that are not safe. So at 8:00 in the morning and 5:00 at night, there's a lot of traffic from the Westgates, from all these homes that are going east. And then now this is going to be right at the front of all that going toward Blosser, so all that traffic coming on and, and people trying to pay attention who's going where. And then regarding the pedestrian walkway, it's a great idea, but it is not a safe walkway at this point in that it's not at a corner and it's, there's no crosswalk. So to walk from one part of the path to the other is all the traffic that you would have to be considering that it's going on Carmen. I know that part of the general plan purpose is to inform community members and give them some reassurance of what to expect near their homes. And I looked to the general plan and felt reassured that this is going, what it was going to be in the future, and now we're looking at it not being that. And I'm looking at eight units, because eight units is going to be behind every house. So yeah, the back end, but then all the people, the units are facing in, so there's eight units that are going to be facing my backyard. There's eight outdoor patios that is going to have music and barbecues and children that, all that noise and all the noise from those units, let alone all the ones, and you can't mitigate the noise. And so I'm looking at my property value going down substantially, as well as my quality of life.
Ned, can you show me the coming in on Carmen Lane and the driveways?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Council members. This is Carmen Lane. This is the main entrance off of Carmen Lane. It will have a gate at this entrance, and then this is the drive aisle leading to the, throughout the project site. Here are the residents that are just west. One, I believe, is occupied by the woman who just spoke. There are six units that face that multipurpose trail. They do not have any patios that directly face any of those units. Their patios are on the first floor in these interior courtyard areas and not facing the multipurpose trail.
So there's no side yard or backyard at all?
There, if you could see in this, there, there's a walkway where they can use to enter into their residence, but there is no patio or open space on this area. These are their garages where the triangular denotations are shown, and they can enter their house through that garage, or there is also a first-floor entrance off of these walkways. Here are the screen trees that are added along this multipurpose trail to provide further screening. And then these patio areas are all in these courtyard areas within the front yard areas of the residence.
Okay, the one I was asking is, where it shows Carmen Lane and it shows the entrance into the project.
This one?
No.
Talking about the offset driveways?
Yes, the offset driveways. I'm sorry, I'm not describing well.
I'm just going to go through them all, and you tell me when I'm there.
No, there was another one. Yeah, yeah.
I'll keep going.
What we're asking is if you could highlight the two offset driveways that the young lady was talking about.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Right there.
Here is the Westgate Apartments driveway access onto Carmen Lane, and this is the proposed driveway access of the Sierra Monte Townhomes.
And how far is that driveway then from Blosser?
The proposed driveway distance from Blosser, I'm not sure what that exact measurement is. Maybe the Public Works Department stays up here.
You wouldn't have that information, Mr. Chan, Ms. Rie?
I don't have it offhand, but let me try and find that for you.
Normally, when they're doing engineering work, you, you work off of the center line of the access points.
Okay.
And so the center line of the driveway is about 40 feet off-center from the center of the drive aisle coming into the project. So 40 feet off-center.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Cordero.
Thank you. I assume this matter has been reviewed by a traffic engineer?
Yes, it has. And a traffic study was conducted.
Okay, and there, there was no negative impact that they brought that?
There was no concerns, there was no mitigation measures proposed, there were no findings in that traffic study that warranted any concern about the driveway alignment, the amount of traffic, or the current configurations of Blosser or Carmen Lane that resulted in any type of mitigation or changes that needed to be made to the project or site improvements to any of the streets surrounding it.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions at all? Okay, I'll close the public hearing at this point and bring this item back to the council for discussion and/or a motion.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Cordero.
I, I have some concern for the young lady that spoke and said that she was worried about the noise and, and the viewing. However, I don't think that there are going to be any more noise than there are in the neighborhood where I live, where there's a house back there already. And, and if we've made, if the effort's been made to mitigate the viewing, I just don't see that there's a problem. And unless there's more questions, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay. Go ahead, make the motion.
Madam Mayor, I'd make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving the general plan, land use policy map amendment for the Sierra Monte Townhome project at the southwest corner of Blosser Road and Carmen Lane. You want to do it together?
Yes.
And introduce an ordinance for the first reading and continue to the next meeting for the second reading and adoption, amending the official zoning map for the Sierra Monte Townhome project at the southwest corner of Blosser Road and Carmen Lane.
Thank you. Any, there's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay, a motion and a second, further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Cordero.
Hi.
Councilmember Moes.
Hi.
Councilmember Sodan.
Hi.
Councilmember Waterfield.
Hi.
Madam Mayor, good evening. Hi. Okay, the next order of business is another public hearing. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will consider an appeal of the Planning Commission's approval of the permit amendment to the planned development permit for the Housing Authority of Santa Barbara County to construct 29 affordable housing units on, one on-site manager's unit, a community center, and other common amenities on a 1.3-acre site in a planned development high-density residential district.
Okay, the staff report is to be made by Community Development Director, Mr. Rie.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. And I have Ned Azair here again, she'll provide a presentation for the Cox Bungalows' appeal.
Madam Mayor, Council members, this project, Cox Bungalow, first came to the Planning Commission and City Council back in 2018. A general plan amendment and a development permit was processed for this project that was approved by the Planning Commission in October 17th of 2018, and then by the City Council in November 20th of 2018. That project was for a 29-unit senior housing project that included one caretaker's unit. It did include the rezoning of the site from single-family residential to high-density residential. Since it's a first approval, the Housing Authority of the County of Santa Barbara has applied for an amendment to the project. That amendment is before you this evening to change it from a senior project to an affordable special-needs housing project. That went before the Planning Commission at two public hearings and was approved by the Planning Commission on April 3rd of 2019. On April 8th of 2019, an appeal was filed by the Law Office of David Bixby in opposition of the project, and that appeal is before the City Council this evening for consideration. The project's site is located at 1141 Cox Lane. It is surrounded primarily by single-family residents to the north, to the east, and the south. Across North Blosser Road is County of Santa Barbara jurisdiction, and concurrently there are agricultural fields located there. The project's site has an existing single-family residence right now. It's a 1.3-acre site, and the City Council rezoned, approved a rezone of that site to PDR3 Planned Development High Density Residential back in November 20th of 2018. The site plan and design is remaining the same. What was proposed and approved was a 29-unit project that included one-story buildings that had one-bedroom units in it that were approximately 550 square feet with open patio space. Those one-story buildings surrounded a central parking lot area with 14 parking spaces. Also in the center of the project's site is a community center and garden space. And access to the project's site was solely off West Cox Lane with a common driveway. There's an existing block wall that surrounds the perimeter of the project's site that will remain intact except for along West Cox Lane where it will be removed to integrate the project into the surrounding neighborhood. Here is a bird's-eye perspective of the project's site, what's being proposed. Again, you can see the single-story buildings along West Cox Lane that have been designed to fit in with the existing single-family neighborhood. They're all one-story buildings with a small central parking lot area surrounding it. Here are elevations of the proposed design. They are cottage-style bungalow design with porch areas or patios, and four units will be within each of the buildings. You can again see the design here on the upper elevation. Here's an interred shot of the project from the parking lot looking at the single-story bungalows, and then again, another view of the cottage bungalows from the interior parking lot area. The main concerns outlined in the appeal surround, are surrounding the parking requirements of the project and what's being provided. So when the project was originally approved in 2018 as a senior housing project, the senior housing parking requirements in the municipal code differ from the other multifamily projects. The project only required 12 uncovered parking spaces as a senior project, and 14 were provided, so it met the parking requirement as needed by the municipal code. Now, what's being proposed is a special-needs housing project for affordable, special-needs housing project. Our municipal code does not have specific guidelines or standards for affordable housing or special-needs housing. It relies simply on what a multifamily project would require for parking, so any market-rate affordable, market-rate project within the city. That requirement would be for a project of this type to have 60 parking spaces, so 30 of which being covered, 30 of which being uncovered. This state has separate and specific parking requirements for special-needs projects and affordable projects that the city does not include in the municipal code. If we were to go off the state's requirements, they would only be required to do nine parking spaces for this project, which is well below the 14 uncovered spaces they are providing. Again, this is a state's effort to get special-needs and affordable housing projects built in the, in the state of California. To give you a definition of what special-needs housing is, it is housing that's meant for those that have mental health disabilities, physical disabilities, developmental disabilities, including but not limited, limited to intellectual, cerebral palsy, epilepsy, and autism, and also for those that are at risk of homelessness. So with that, the state believes that these category of special-needs housing does generate and need less parking requirements and relies on alternate modes of transportation to meet their needs. There's a similar justification that this project is making for the reduction in parking that they are requesting. Some of the alternate transportation modes that they are relying on to meet the needs of this project are, one, transit, the city's existing transit system. There is a, an existing transit stop right here at the intersection of Western Avenue and Harding Avenue that's less than half a mile from the project's site, so about a seven-minute walking distance. Service to this stop runs weekdays from 6:30 a.m. to 9:30 p.m. and on 30-minute intervals, and it runs on weekends on hourly intervals from 8:30 a.m. to 6:30 p.m. Those that are able to, to travel from the project's site to the bus stop would go down Blosser Road, then down Donovan Road, and then to Western Avenue to access this stop. If they were unable to access this transit stop, SMAT also has an alternate transportation service for them, that's curb-to-curb transportation, meaning they would come to the project's site, pick up the residents, and take them wherever they needed to go. They charge a service fare of $1.25 for that service, and they are available Monday through Friday from 5:30 a.m. to 10:30 p.m., and Saturday and Sundays from 7:00 a.m. to 7:45 p.m. Those that qualify to be housed at this project, should the City Council allow a special-needs affordable housing project to be constructed here, would all qualify for the use of the SMAT services based on the special-needs definition. In addition, there are service providers that partner with the Housing Authority themselves to provide other assistances for their programs, such as Home for Good or Santa Barbara County Behavioral Wellness Programs. They also can come and pick up the residents and take them to their services as needed. The Housing Authority is relying on these alternate modes of transportation to be provided to their residents. They will disclose all of these services to their residents and make sure they have readily and available access to them. They believe, and have shown in other projects they've built that are similar to this, that the onsite parking demand is much less than what our municipal code requires based that it's an affordable project, and many of the residents can't afford the maintenance and cost of a vehicle and rely on these alternate transportation options to service their needs. They've provided here a list of other projects within both the City of Santa Maria and the County of Santa Barbara that they have built and are for similar housing types. Here is shown what their unit counts are and the parking that's provided on those sites in comparison to what's actually been used, and they have gone out and done research and counted the amount of spaces that were occupied. As you can see, each one of these projects used less than what was provided on-site and well less than what the municipal code requires for two spaces for each unit of multifamily housing on the site. And they believe because of these justifications that there's a sufficient parking provided on-site to meet what will be the demands of the residents. With that, that concludes staff's presentation. We are recommending that the City Council take one of the following actions, either adopt a resolution denying the appeal by the Law Office of David Bixby and upholding the Planning Commission's decision to approve the Cox Bungalow project as amended to be an affordable special-needs project, or to adopt a resolution approving the appeal and overturning the Planning Commission's decision to approve the Cox Bungalow project as a affordable special-needs project. I'm available for any questions regarding the project, as well as the Housing Authority of the County of Santa Barbara is here. Joe Halsell of Halsell Builders, who is currently the property owner, is also here and available.
Are there any questions from that? Dr. Moes.
I'm sorry, did you mention that they're only going to allow nine of those units to have cars?
That's, they are going to allow nine of those units to be used by the residents. The Planning Commission put parameters on the conditions of approval at the Planning Commission hearing to reserve certain spaces, one for the staff member, one for a caretaker's unit, one which is an ADA-accessible unit, and the remainder of them for residents. The Housing Authority is able to monitor that through their lease agreements. Because this is a state and federal-regulated project, they go into strict lease agreements with the residents. with the residents and can either allow them to have a vehicle or not based on those lease agreements, and they will provide them at a first-come, first-served basis. So nine residents will get it. Once that's filled, then no more of the remaining residents would be allowed to have a vehicle.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cordero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also need to disclose ex parte that I spoke with Mr. Halsell regarding this, this matter. And what, gaining what I did from him was just what Dr. Moats just asked about, and that the parking is controllable from the landowner. And I don't think the parking would be an issue. And I'm prepared if there's no more questions.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I know that the Housing Authority of Santa Barbara County has experience with other units similar to, to this one, other special needs.
Yeah, here's a list of some of their projects.
Great. I'd like to know how effective or how they, how, how well do residents or the tenants that live there do with the restricted parking?
I think that would be a question better answered by the applicant or the housing authority who's here and able to do so.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Soto. My name is John Palaski. I'm Director of Housing Development with the Housing Authority of the County of Santa Barbara. And as you notice, we included three specific projects. We wanted to include two here in the City of Santa Maria, one of which is not special needs, and that would be Ted's and H Garden. That is an affordable family project. And you see a few more spaces are used there, still not 100% of the spaces. Rancho Hermosa, which is also here in the City of Santa Maria, is actually housing homeless families, or formerly homeless families. And as you can see, that was about, we're about 30%. We're very overparked there. In fact, we have to try to keep skateboarders out from the parking area that's never used. Pescaer Lobs is in Isla Vista. It is all special needs. It is, it's actually 33 units, 32 non-manager units that are all special needs. And the most we have ever had in four and a half years of operation have been seven vehicles. We go from four to seven vehicles, depending on the residents that we have there. How we monitor is, most of the folks that live in affordable housing cannot afford to own multiple vehicles, probably not even one vehicle. That is even more true with people with special needs. Many of the folks with special needs do not have valid driver's licenses, simply because medications that they may be prescribed or other things that, that have gone on do not allow them to be, have valid licenses. Those with valid licenses often cannot afford to own a vehicle. We require at the Housing Authority, we do not want cars that aren't locked. We do not want cars that can't be used sitting there. So they have to be operational, they must be licensed, and we have to know so that we can attach that particular vehicle belongs there to a particular resident. So we have, where we are fully parked, which is Rancho Hermosa and Pescaer Lobs, we have a lot of unused parking space. We could have been housing individuals there. Instead, it's paved over and, and never utilized. We have never had a complaint from a resident, simply because we do not have enough residents that have operational vehicles to fill up the parking spaces. And that's the reason that, knowing that the state has now finally recognized this, a lot of jurisdictions are, we requested that we could maximize the number of units to house individuals, understanding that it is highly unlikely that even nine of these special needs households will have operational vehicles. If they do, as the council knows, and thanks for approving it, we have the residences at Depot Street that's under construction. And so we have opportunities for people. If they have a vehicle, we're at the nine-vehicle maximum. We have other properties here within the city that can accommodate individuals who need to have a car and have a car. I think it's highly unlikely we'll get there, but we do have a Plan B should that be the case.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'd also like to disclose that I met with Mr. Halsell.
Okay. Any other questions? Oh, Dr. Moats?
I also met Mr. Halsell.
Okay. Okay, is...
I'd like to ask a question.
Sure, go ahead.
So there's 30 units, and 29 are functional, one's the manager. And the number of persons that can occupy a unit would be how many people?
In, in theory, state law allows up to three people within a one-bedroom unit. In actual on-the-ground use, again going back to Pescaer Lobs as, as an example, four and a half years, 32 non-manager units. This is going to be 29, that's 32. The most we've ever had are 34 residents. And that's simply because, again, people with special needs, you know, typically in society, they, they have dislocated themselves from every other person and support system. And so typically, they're, they're living by themselves. Occasionally, we get a couple or a single parent with a young child who are coming out of homelessness, and they are certainly welcome in, in units like this. Typically, as families reassemble, they would want something close to Rancho Hermosa, which are primarily three-bedroom townhomes. And so as, as the family reassembles, some of the times the kids are coming out of foster care, as the parents are recovering from substance abuse or whatever the case may be, they would move to Rancho Hermosa, also here in the city. And that's the reason we, we like to have the options of the various types of housing.
So the rent would be month-to-month? You don't make leases?
We, we do have leases, but there basically is a month-to-month lease. The lease is our rule enforcer that I had mentioned, and it came up with the Planning Commission. How do you enforce? How do you know? Somebody will say, okay, I don't own a vehicle, but they do. And they secret it on the street. It would be a lease violation. In the case of affordable housing, we have the ability to restrict the income of the individuals, the individuals who are there, who are authorized to be there, because again, these are income-restricted properties. We need to know all of the people that are authorized to live in a particular unit so that we can determine their income, do background checks. And it would be just as it would be to have an unauthorized household member living that was not on the lease. It would be a violation of the lease, subject the individual to eviction if they did not keep their commitment, that they would not have a vehicle, they would not own a vehicle during their tenancy. And again, the, what, what we instruct the individual is, if you now have a car, you now have stabilized, you have a job, you now want a vehicle, we have other options. We have other units within the city that would be more appropriate, that would provide the parking space that you need.
Why do you think the demand is going to be, to be housed in your facility? Is there a long waiting list of people?
There is a, a long waiting list of people. Let me grab something very quickly.
Always is.
As, as many of you know, there is a point-in-time count for people experiencing homelessness. This, this is not all of the special needs individuals within the City of Santa Maria. This would be specific to people in shelters and, and sheltered during their cars, within their cars. The point-in-time count went from, it's 464 in this year's point-in-time count within the City of Santa Maria. That was up from two years ago, the last point-in-time count of 422. So there has been an increase, even though the, the city and the Housing Authority has partnered together. Now, that's without Depot Street being online, so we, we will be housing a number of the folks there. And then apart from that, we literally have, countywide, we have over 5,000 people on the list. For the City of Santa Maria, we have well over 1,200, many of whom would qualify as special needs for the development.
If you don't have any money, can you move into this project? I mean, if you have no income, other than what you might get from the state, you know?
Councilmember Moats, that's a really good question. I'm glad that you mentioned that. We have a resource, a rental subsidy resource known as Section 8. And we have the ability to, what's called project base, a portion of that important resource, which means rather than the individual having to wait five or eight years to get to the top of a waiting list, it's attached to the unit itself. And because this is a very valuable resource, the Housing Authority has taken the position in recent years that it needs to be limited to those units that will house people with special needs. Because oftentimes, people with special needs, people coming out of good Sam, people living in their cars, don't, can't even afford the reduced loan-for-housing tax credit rents. And so if an individual has no income, but they would otherwise benefit from this housing, their share of the rent would be 30% of whatever their income is, which would be zero. And the entire rent payment would be made from the Section 8 program. So the lack of income in these particular cases does not exclude people from housing. And we feel that's very important. As people get stabilized, they get connected to benefits, they get a part-time job, and they're, then it becomes 30% of whatever their new income is.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cordero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sir, how long, how long have you been working with the Housing Authority or any business like the Housing Authority?
Councilmember Cordero, really good question, that'd be to show my age. Next month, I'll be 23 years with the Housing Authority of the County of Santa Barbara as Director of Housing Development. Prior to that, I worked with housing eight years in the private sector, primarily in the Antelope Valley, but also into Kern County and parts of northern Los Angeles County. So a total of 31 years in, in housing.
Okay, thank you. In, in all that 31 years, have you ever been challenged on the, or how many times have you been challenged on the parking issue that's, that's being raised here?
Councilmember Cordero, we oftentimes, when the site will allow it, we will be fully parked. I mean, that had been the history of the Housing Authority, to not request parking concessions. There are two things that really drove us to now be requesting parking concessions. One is that the sad feeling that I have when I go to Rancho Hermosa, which is 47 units, housing families that came out of homelessness, and more than, about 70% of the parking goes unused at any given point in time. And this is at the high point of the usage. It's actually less than that during the day. And so with the recognition of the affordable housing industry that we would rather provide units than paved-over spaces that are never going to be used, that was a, a change that occurred just within the last few years. And so for the residences at Depot Street, the council will recall, we did request a concession for the parking. That was the first time we had actually requested a concession in the City of Santa Maria. It was a small concession. It wasn't as, as large of a concession as this. It was a reduction in its spaces. And the council at that point, as did the Planning Commission, decided it would be better to have a little bit more open space than to have paved-over parking spaces that are unlikely to be used. So at residences at Depot Street, there will be units that will, in the lease agreement, state they cannot own a vehicle during their tenancy there. It's only, I, my memory is, is not failing me, it's about, I think it's 10 of the units that will need to do that on, 10 of the 80 units. So it's not the same type of concession as this. But then that also is a, is a mix of different, that will have some families in there which we recognize are more likely to, to own operating vehicles.
Sir, my, my question, I'm directing to, to you is, have you ever been challenged by one of the tenants or something like that, that said, oh, no, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have a vehicle, I don't care what you say?
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I misunderstood. No. In the 31 years, we have never been, been challenged. And I, I connect to housing management. They, they would tell me very, very quickly, no, we have never been challenged that way.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. And Dr. Moats?
Ask one more question before we sit down. Right now, the project is walled in. It's got walls on all four sides. A decision was made to eliminate the wall on, on Cox, so as to integrate the senior project into the community. Now that it's no longer going to be a senior project but special needs, do you still want to not have the wall there?
I, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Moats, you know, we're, we're open. It, it came up when we were speaking with staff that the city, you have a policy really trying to integrate housing developments with the community, with the streetscape. We also have that, that policy. We really don't want our folks to feel that they're, they're walled off, but are, but are actually integrated into the, the greater community. We, we do events and different things where we try to integrate our residents in with the community. We're not opposed, I, I think, I look at our executive director, whatever the pleasure of the, the council is, I believe what we did discuss with the Planning Commission was to have some type of fencing at that spot, as opposed to the, the wall. And this is, we're talking about the, the street frontage. They have maybe a four- or five-foot fence to distinguish the, the property site from the street itself, and yet not wall off that entire site. But certainly, it's, it's at the pleasure of the, of the council, what we do. We do not have a, we are not adamant in our position, one way or the other, about the wall.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions in the council? Okay. Is the appellant here?
Yes.
Mr. Bixby, would you like to make any comments?
Hi, everyone. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Councilmembers, thank you. My name is David Bixby. My office is located at 937 East Main Street here in Santa Maria. It's been said that, you know, first of all, I'd like to point out that the three other housing properties that they've talked about are, are located in commercial areas, okay? So this is a neighborhood, this is a single-family neighborhood, as opposed to in the back of the Jack in the Box over on Main Street, as opposed to Anger off of Broadway. This is a single-family residence, and they're, they're already impacted with street parking, okay? So in the evening time, when people come back from work and so forth, you can drive down Cox Lane, and you'll see that there's a lot of impacted parking already. They're asking this council to approve a process which would take away more than six times the required normal parking. It's better to look at a project in advance than to try to correct problems after the fact. When I talked to Bob Habitschek of the Housing Authority, I said, well, what are you going to do if residents buy cars and start parking out in the street? How are you going to enforce that? And he mentioned the, the lease situation, but as you know, the lease situation is one of, it's legally encumbered. It, it takes time to correct problems like that. But more importantly, he said, well, what you, what the neighbors would do is they would notify the, the manager, and the manager could have the cars towed. And my response to that is, is that any way to conduct neighborhood business by having that kind of a situation? Knowing in advance that there's only going to be nine parking places there, and to approve it simply on the say-so of somebody who says, well, we don't think that people are going to have cars anyway? Here, here's one of the problems. We, we want people that are, and by the way, this is classified as very low-income housing. We want people in that status to become upward mobile. We want them to succeed. To succeed, especially in a place like Santa Maria, you need transportation. You need a car. So already, we're building into the situation a problem for the people, not only the neighbors, but also the residents of the project itself. So another requirement that the state requires is that there be adequate transit. When we, when we met with the, the commission itself, there was a different scenario put up in terms of what was up in terms of what was available for, for, for transportation. So, I'm not sure what, what changed there. But the hours of transportation, especially for Smooth and Smat and so forth, was considerably different, and didn't necessarily accommodate the needs of the people that were there. And I, and we were just trying to envision people with different various needs, trying to ambulate across Donovan to get to the bus stop. That was just one other example of, of a project that's being, shall we say, crammed into a scenario that just doesn't work on a practical level. And, and these poor people have lived, you know, the Zaradis and Hernandezes are just a few of the people that have lived in this area for years, enjoying quiet use of their property. This property started out as a single-family dwelling property. It was, there are variants for senior housing was obtained, and that's fine, because Zaradis thought, you know, seniors, as they get older, don't drive. And, and they do tend to be quiet, you know? We're not talking about single parents with children or teenagers. We're not talking about people on parole. We're not talking about people that are first time obtaining housing after being homeless. They're talking about a quiet, senior residential area. And all of a sudden, it flipped, because the cost of the construction and the profitability of it became a problem. So therefore, all of a sudden, it now is being introduced as a situation for very low-income housing. And it just doesn't, doesn't match the neighborhood. We're really asking that you do something different about this. Perhaps permit less construction, more parking, something that will assure the neighbors that they're not gonna have additional problems now with parking along the street. You know, it's easy to come in and tell you that that's not gonna be a problem. But once the project is built, everybody has to live with it, including the neighbors. And that's why they've asked you to reconsider what the Planning Commission did. And we will also answer any questions if you want.
Any questions of Mr. Bixby?
No.
Nope. No questions. Thank you. Madam Kirk, do we have any written correspondence?
Yes, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Staff has received one written communication from Jim Talbert, Talbit, Executive Director of Smooth, supporting the Cox Bungalow project, noting ample space for bus and van access, and minimal traffic for drivers entering and exiting the property. He also provided a Smat ADA brochure that highlights special needs services for transportation.
Thank you. Okay, so I'd like to, I'd like to, oh, do we have any requests to speak?
Yeah, open the public hearing.
Okay, I'd like to open up the public hearing at this time.
Give me the five.
And Glenn Morris, followed by Eddie Taylor, followed by Marilyn Garcia.
Good evening again, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Glenn Morris, Chamber of Commerce, 614 South Broadway. Just quickly, I, I think this is an important project. You know, we, we hear a lot about the, the need for housing across the spectrum in this state. And, and I, I find it interesting that we make it such a complicated concept. What we end up needing at the end of the day is, is just more. We, we need to build more housing of all project types, and for all different classes of residents. This one has, I think, a special situation because of the type of residents they're gonna bring in. These are the folks that, that least can fend for themselves, and I think we have an obligation to, to try to find solutions when we can there. So, we, we think this is an important project. It's interesting tonight, the theme seems to be housing, and, and we're, we're making progress. We would encourage you to continue to build and let this project move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Eddie Taylor, followed by Marilyn Garcia.
Evening, Mayor, council. Eddie Taylor, United Way CEO. Start with a couple of comments. As most of you know, in October of 2017, representing the United Way, I informed the community that we would be taking over the Central Coast Collaborative on Homelessness, and we would be launching a program that we refer to as Home for Good, Santa Barbara County. We made the comments that our focus with that effort was not to end homelessness, but rather to focus on ending the negative impacts homelessness has on our local businesses, our communities, and on our homeless neighbors. We also said that we would bring the same level of dedication and organizational development to that effort that we brought to our literacy and our financial stability programs. In January of 2018, we launched Home for Good, so less than 18 months ago. During the past 18 months, we've worked with the County of Santa Barbara to organize the coordinated entry system. We have also worked diligently to organize the data management system, and I can tell you today that I've got a whole lot of data points that I can share with you. We have data that we can make decisions by, but tonight, I want to focus my comments on the data points relative to homeless veterans. We have, by the point-in-time count, which some of you participated in, 118 veterans in Santa Barbara County experiencing homelessness. In our data management system, we've identified 142 homeless veterans. We have all the data on those individuals, we know where they are and what their needs are. When we started Home for Good, we said the first thing we need to do is identify how we're gonna operate this as a business, and focus on products, if you will, that we could actually have an impact on. Veteran homelessness and chronic homelessness. Of the point-in-time count, 1,803 individuals identified as homeless in the county, we know that 16% of them are chronically homeless. So, that's a, a population we can make an impact on. This housing helps us to make that impact. But again, back to focus on the veteran need, we have three projects in Santa Barbara County that are focusing on housing veterans. With the Depot project, we have eight units set aside for veterans experiencing homelessness. The Cox project, we have five. And in Santa Barbara, the City Housing Authority of Santa Barbara is constructing a project to address the housing needs of 17 veterans. It gives us a total of 30, which represents about 21% of the need. We need, as Glenn just said, we need to continue to focus on building units that will address our issues. I've said it to all of you in the past, we can't solve this problem if we can't build. But I don't mean building more units. Of course, we have to build units for everybody that needs housing. We also have to build and are building new relationships with landlords in a different way, as well as new partnerships like the Housing Authority. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Marilyn Garcia.
My name is Marilyn Garcia, and I'm the one that lives on 1715 North DeJoy. I'm right behind this place where they want to be building this bungalows. And I too have had concerns regarding to parking, I'm sorry, regarding to the parking. I'm on DeJoy Street, and I, I know I go out of Cox every morning just to go to work in the morning, and it's very packed, even in the morning, at 5:00 in the morning, because people haven't gotten all up to go to work like I do. And then coming home, even, even at 1:30, you'll see cars start to come in parking on Cox, and it gets very full in the evenings, when everybody's home. I'm the one that's on the second corner on North DeJoy, right behind the project site. And I've been promised that they're gonna lift up my fence to six feet, because I'm only on a four-foot, and I, they can see me, and I can see everything that's going down on the bottom. And I'm hoping that that's gonna go for it, if we, if you decide to let this project go through. During the last time that I was here, on April 3rd, there has been some things happening on this site that I'm very concerned about, since I'm a resident and I'm living right behind this project unit. And I really feel that the, the premises at this time is not being supervised by anyone. I've saw, and I know that one of my neighbors had to call the City Department because of the grass growing up to six feet high. Finally, last week, a tractor came in and they cut the grass. Gates were being left open where other people from the outside are going to the back gate, right on the street, on DeJoy, and they're going into the premises, they're living in there. Different people come in and out of that premises, 'cause that gate has, is, has no lock or anything to be supervised. I just have a question, if I would like the council, just to take a ride down Cox Lane, look at the premises, how it looks. It's, it's been demolished. The fire department went there doing practice, so they've tore all the roof out, they've broken windows, things are laying around all over. I mean, if you talk about ghetto, this place looks like a ghetto at this time. It's very depressing for me to come home from work and to see this place in the condition that it is right now, because no one has taken time to take care of it. Thank you for your time.
Go ahead, you can, you can finish up your thoughts, Mrs. Garcia.
I just hope that, I've lived in my, my home for almost 38 years already. Most of the ones that live on DeJoy Street have lived there over 30 years. People on Cox, there's a couple of the neighbors that I know that have been living there over 25 to 30 years. So, this is something really hard and very strange project, because when we was told about it being a senior development, okay, we thought, okay, this is, this is not that bad. But now, when they brought in that it was gonna be also for disability and, you know, I'm really concerned as a resident. I'm really, really concerned what's gonna happen. Is my property gonna go down in value because of this place being built? I'm very concerned, and I'm sure that many of the other residents, they have come to the council, and we have talked, and I hope that you take this into consideration, the needs of the neighborhood to be heard. Thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Garcia? Ms. Waterfield has a question.
I have a question for you. Would you rather keep it a senior project?
I would.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jeannie Sparks, followed by Jennifer McMurray.
Hello, I'm Jeannie Sparks. Thank you, Mayor, council, members of council. I'm here representing Santa Barbara County Action Network, and we're speaking in favor of the project, and hope that you will deny the appeal. There's a tremendous need for affordable housing in the city, as everybody knows. This is a good project, and people with special needs need to have a place where they can be. And thank goodness, we have the Housing Authority to do that. I sympathize with the residents who fear that there'll be more cars parking in front of the residences. That, I know that it's, it's really, that is a tough thing to deal with. But I think the nature of the people who will be living there means that they won't be having cars, basically, because they can't. Most of them can't. Some will be able to, but as the gentleman from the Housing Authority has shown, it's only a small percentage of the people that they serve. On a personal level, I have to say that, well, I just wanna say it because I'm so proud of him. I have a nephew with cerebral palsy. Now, he doesn't live here, but he's in a wheelchair. And he tried, when he was a young man, to learn how to drive, because that was part of the thing that they do, to try to get people integrated in the community. And there, there was just no way, he didn't have the coordination. So, even though he's got the brain, and he has a master's degree, and he's a counselor, he cannot drive, and that's one thing he'll, he'll never do. And that's the way it works with special needs persons. He would be eligible, if he lived in this town, to be there. I know there's people like him that need a place, and I hope that you will take that into consideration and approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer McMurray, followed by Krista Richardson.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jennifer McMurray, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the lead project, in favor of allocating 30, 29 apartment units for formerly homeless, special needs persons living with disabilities. I currently reside in Santa Maria and attend Allen Hancock College full-time. I am currently a 4.0 student, and I am the incoming Vice President of the Alpha Gamma Sigma Aquarius Chapter Honor Society, Santa Maria campus. You may be asking why this information is important. I tell you this because I am also a person who lives with a serious mental illness. I have come a very long way to be as successful as I am, and I give much of the credit to my success to the fact that I have housing. When a person has nowhere to live and their basic needs are not met, that person lives in perpetual survival mode. Living in a perpetual state of survival does not allow for advancement in things such as work or school. There are numerous articles on the National Center for Biotechnology Information website regarding the cost-effectiveness and success rates of individuals that receive supported housing and case management following homelessness. These articles indicate a higher housing retention rate for individuals receiving both supported services, supported housing, and case management, which the residents of this new project will be receiving. According to endhomelessness.org, individuals using supportive services in addition to supported housing are more likely to participate in job training programs, attend school, discontinue substance use, and have fewer instances of domestic violence. Saying no to this project means saying no to helping those that need it most to better their lives. I ask that you approve the housing for special needs people in Santa Maria. Formerly homeless individuals with mental illness and special needs can accomplish much in life, but they cannot rebuild their lives if they first do not have a place to call home. Thank you.
Thank you. Krista?
Madam Mayor, City Council? Thank you. I'm Krista Richardson. I'm a Realtor in the area. I served on, with the Good Samaritan Shelter. I've done so for over 20 years. I respect and understand the issues that you have regarding our homeless, and also our people that are developing disabled and all of that. This year, I've had three seniors that I've had the sadness to have, have to sell their homes. Their families, one earns only $1,200 a month. They are now living with their family. Another, we're in the process of almost closing on their home. They earn $1,300 a month. They don't know where they're gonna go. They're terrified. Another is actually in a situation where they're trying to figure it out. They earn $1,800 a month, and have not been able to pay the taxes on their houses. I respect that there's a lot of challenges with this bill, or this project. I respect there's a lot of need in this area. That said, you have a senior housing community here. At the Good Samaritan Shelter, I see tons of our seniors that have served and worked in the community that don't have the services and resources that are available to other income categories. I implore you to maybe consider, if there's any way, and I don't know anything about this, so I'm just making it a suggestion, to where you can partner, offer the people that are living there a senior project that can also serve our homeless elders and seniors. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Very well said. Joe Hossel?
Joe Hossel, I'm a developer on the project. My business address is 3130 Skyway Drive in Santa Maria. I guess just to address a few of the concerns that we have heard, this project absolutely can and will serve seniors, especially those who are at risk of homelessness. That's, that is in the definition of special needs. So, that is directly, directly, what's that? Yeah. Anyhow, so veterans or seniors who are facing homelessness, so while it's not exclusively senior, senior, it is absolutely open to seniors, so. Also, the, the amount of resources that are available for the folks that have special needs to get transportation from door to door, just really breaks any of the barriers that we're talking about that may impact parking in the neighborhood. Your own city has very affordable resources to pick them up, and take them wherever they wanna go, in Santa Maria Orket, out to Tanglewood, and bring them back for $1.25 each way. You know, it's Uber for disabled and special needs. We also, Hossel Builders enjoys a pretty, a very good reputation in the community. We, we partnered, or we, we are partnering in this project with the Housing Authority, because they also have a very stellar reputation of building terrific projects. they also have a very stellar reputation of building terrific projects, well-constructed, well-thought-out, well-designed, that really fit harmoniously in the neighborhoods. So I just want to say that although there is fear that, of what the project may be and what the project is not, I think that council should trust some of the very well-established, very committed members of the community and please go forward with the approval of the project tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure. Joe, Dr. Moats would like to ask you a question.
Mr. Hassel.
Yes.
Couple of questions. Companion pets, dogs, is that okay? A lot of the homeless like have a dog.
Okay. So I particularly have a little bit of experience with this because we are currently, we are currently involved in housing a number of homeless individuals along with our partnership with United Way. And in our experience, and I actually can't really speak for Housing Authorities, but we do, I mean, people do have prescriptions for companion pets and we have to respect that. And so originally, when this project was designed, and the project design has not changed, all the flooring, it was meant to be pet companion friendly, all the units. The flooring, there's no carpet. It's all solid surface, waterproof flooring. All the units are accessible and when they do have a prescription for companion pets, they're allowed. So, and it's designed for it.
How about scooters or motorcycles? Do those count as a vehicle?
I don't think there's an accommodation for those. I mean, not particularly, there's not an accommodation for those in the parking lot. Not particularly.
Just one other thought. If I didn't have any money and I were living at your place, I think I'd get a bicycle. I mean, I bicycle all around Santa Maria. I bicycled over to your place on Sunday. I mean, it's easy to do.
It is, and I think the city's going to great lengths to encourage that kind of transportation throughout the city.
Thank you. Mr. Bixby, I'd like to ask a question. Do you have, I assume one of the residents is sitting next to you?
I do. This is Mr. Rattan.
Okay. Are there any other residents here in the area?
Her family members, there were several that were able to attend the last session and weren't able to come today.
Okay.
Can I respond to any of this?
You may. You may.
I think, well, first of all, senior housing starts at age fifty-five. Okay? Most people are settled and resolved with their issues when they get to be about that age. And as we pointed out a little bit earlier, you would expect that the older the person gets, the less likely they're going to be driving. This has been, tonight has been vetted as a special needs project. That's the first time I hear this. At the last meeting, what we were talking about is low-income people and that included all kinds of people. Single parents with children, you name it. The homeless were mentioned and of course, people that had developmental issues were also mentioned. But the idea here is it's low-income housing. Section eight was just mentioned. And my clients are really concerned about that. You know, we have enough problems over on the northwest end of town as it is. And they really feel that this project is being considered because it isn't a northwest end of town and that it probably wouldn't be permitted somewhere else with nine parking places. People can come up to you and represent all night long that there's not going to be a problem, but once the project is built and the residents decide, I want a car and I signed a lease that says I can't have a car, so I'm going to park it out on the street where nobody knows that I have the car. I mean, you can imagine a whole host of problems that would develop behind something like that. This was set up to be a senior project. These people supported the idea, you know, they were told it's going to be a quiet residential thing. It was going to go from a single-family residential property to an intense project that somehow they were in their hearts able to decide, you know, this is reasonable because senior citizens are going to live here. The whole thing has changed. And not only did it change, but the change went further than just, we want to build this here. We want to reduce the amount of parking that's required and we're going to expand to include all different kinds of people. Their only criteria is that they don't have income. They're low-income people. And you can only imagine how a resident would feel that's been living on Cox Lane all this time. I didn't mention before, but Cox Lane is the access street into a large neighborhood section. So it already has a fairly significant amount of traffic as it is. We're talking about emergency vehicles and everything else coming to a situation where people have a multitude of problems that have to be addressed. All that to say that it's one thing for this council to consider something like this if there was appropriate accommodation. The arguments would probably be de minimis or certainly they wouldn't be as substantial as they are now. But the point is, they're asking you right up front, approve something where we only have to have nine parking spaces for a potential eighty-seven occupancy. And that's the other thing. They said, well, it's more than likely there's not going to be eighty-seven people there. There is no guarantee that they will not fill up those homes because they are by law permitted three people per home. So that would be eighty-seven people.
Mr. Bixby, how many people are you representing?
Five, I think.
Five, okay. Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
You have a question?
For staff.
Okay. Yes, Ms. Soto.
Was the special needs definition included in the report for the planning commissioners?
Yes, it was. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay. I will, I'll close the public hearing and bring this back to the council for discussion.
I'd like to make some comments.
Sure.
I kept quiet during this whole entire process because I just wanted to get a good understanding of what the situation was. I know that when we had the senior project, I was called in several times by planners with problems they had had to push this project along. And I was more than happy to help put, pull, push this project along because it was for senior housing. I look at the words of special needs everywhere, but seniors are a special need as well. If anything, I would put them above because they're at an age where they are where they are. They helped build this community or the community from where they came from. And I just always wanted to have that special respect for the senior citizens. I, I'm looking at one comment a gentleman made and he says, some of these are at least, they can't even fund for themselves for the least of them. Seniors are those people as well. We're looking at, with Mrs. Snyder just coming up and talking about increased rents, we're looking at trying to help the seniors in mobile parks make sure that their leases are livable for them to be in. Some of them may not be able to live there and they're going to need a place to go. I love this project because as a city council person, we see all of these projects coming down. And when the senior project came up, I thought, oh my gosh, that is a great answer for those that are falling through the gap that need a place to go. So my opinion to my fellow colleagues is that I would like to keep it a senior housing project because they truly deserve that safety net underneath them because everything is so volatile for them right now in situations. And we've got a lot of projects going on for other people with the Depot project. We, you know, we've had so many of those coming in, but we rarely have senior projects coming on and it's such an underserved housing. So I'm very passionate about it and I just hope and pray that my colleagues go along with me.
You know, I would like to, I have a comment and all. This was, we changed the zoning and it came as a senior project and I think all of us here were very pleased. Housing is a big issue in Santa Maria, all throughout California. We know that. But I, and all of us have been meeting with people from mobile home parks and a lot of them are seniors. And to me, it's really an unmet need, that we have a lot of unmet needs in the city, but that is one of the unmet needs that we don't have people advocating for. It seems they're not coming up here. And so those of you who spoke for the project don't live over there. The people that Mr. Bixby is representing, Mrs. Garcia, that is their neighborhood. And I certainly respect that. And we have all that, the Housing Authority does a fantastic job of housing. They really do. One time only that I voted against a project and I was brand-new on the council and I am still regretting that. But besides that, I think that we really need to respect the residents of that community. We need to respect that. We don't do enough for senior housing. We have the Lutheran Bethel Church that just now, we had a groundbreaking about three weeks ago for senior housing. And a lot of times, people need to downsize and there's no place for them to go. The parking, we can argue the parking one way or the other, and I know the planning commission, that was a big issue for them. The, as far as the transit goes, I don't want, whether they're seniors or they're challenged, I don't want them crossing Donovan to get on a bus. I don't think, what it says, a seven-minute walk. I was going to walk that, but I didn't have time, but I don't think it's a seven-minute walk. I would, we have a lot of veterans that are seniors, so I have not a problem with that. We have Depot coming online. We have all these, I think I counted, a hundred and three units plus the Depot unit coming online. And we just have the one that I said was built by the Lutheran Church and I can't remember how many units that was, but that is senior housing. I am going to support the appeal. I think that it was senior housing when it came in. We did the rezoning. The people in that community, this is their community, this is their neighborhood. And, you know, I just, I know the needs are there. The needs are there on both. But I would hope that we do have veterans, senior veterans living in there. I know that there is a lot of unmet needs on the street. I was in, did the point in time count and we saw the homeless out there and we're trying to deal with that issue. We have a lot of issues to deal with in Santa Maria, in the state of California. But I am going to oppose the appeal. I think that's really important. I appreciate all of you people that come forward to support the other, but you don't live in that neighborhood either.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, may I? Thank you. I just want to say that I agree with Madam, with our mayor and with council member Waterfield when we talk about the importance of providing housing for seniors here in Santa Maria. I just want to note that in my meeting this morning, I learned that the original plan for housing, for senior housing was not going to be affordable. It was going to be for the market rate value. And so in my, it was going to be at market rate value. That's what was approved. And so I just want to, I just want to make that point, that for senior housing, Cox Bungalows originally was intended for senior housing, but it was going to be a market rate value. And so I also want us to think or look at the definition of special needs. These are going to be our most vulnerable community members that are going to be housed. Those with mental health disorders, people with physical disabilities, developmental disabilities, and those who are at risk of homelessness. The city of Santa Maria has said that we prioritize resolving this issue of homelessness. And this is an opportunity that we have right now to do so, to help put us one step closer to resolving, resolving that problem. Denying housing to the most vulnerable among us would be a disservice to them. It sounds like at this point, we are, we are building our communities around vehicles rather around the people who live here. We represent all Santamarians, including those who are most vulnerable, not just, including those who are most vulnerable. I heard a comment earlier about how requiring or putting in, or how section eight sometimes, or how, or section eight or housing, the Housing Authority sometimes can limit a person's mobility, you know, to the middle-class bracket. I just, I also want to share a little story with you all. Growing up, my parents were, we lived in extreme poverty and there was a point when we qualified for, for section eight. And it didn't limit us. On the contrary, it provided that safety net to help us get to what we would now consider the middle class. So I want to rebuttal that. And when it comes to the mayor's point of the concern of folks having to walk a certain distance to access transportation, we received a memo from Smooth saying that they provide transportation services for special needs populations, including seniors. And that they, there is vehicle access to go into, please correct me if I'm wrong, that there is an agreement, that they are willing to go into the community center to be able to provide transportation to those who are in need of it rather than having to walk a certain distance. And so I am in support of moving forward with Hassel's project and the Housing Authority's project. I am glad to hear that seniors will also be able to qualify for these, for this housing, low-income seniors who we need to also provide a safety net for. And I am opposed the appeal.
Dr. Moats.
Oh, good. It's good to go next because I'm going to make this two to two. How do you say it? Well, for all the reasons that Councilwoman Soto has enumerated, I also support the Hassel project and oppose the appeal. And it's a difficult decision and I can understand the arguments on both sides. But I really think that there's a place for us to support very low-income people and this could be a transition for them, maybe to someplace better. And where else are they going to go? So having said that, I'll pass it on to you.
Mr. Cordero.
Thank you, Dr. Moats. First, let me say that I'm a little bit surprised on how, I couldn't do this, I, how we've categorized these people. And I would have a very difficult time suggesting that special needs people are less important than senior citizens. I also heard that senior citizen starts at fifty-five. Is that what you said?
That's what I said.
Yeah, well, I'm going to be seventy next month and I'm still driving. So I think that you're, when you have senior citizens, that you're going to exacerbate the problem of the vehicles as opposed to having these special needs people there. I believe that the special needs people deserve just as much right to move into these facilities as a senior citizen. And when Mr. Hassel said, and Ms. Soto just said it as well, you said that senior citizens are included in your, in your target for tenants. Is that correct? So we're not eliminating anything, whereas if you make it strictly senior citizens, you're actually eliminating the special needs people. So I'm going to go against the appeal and support the Hassel project so that we can move this thing forward.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution denying an appeal by the law office of Mr. David Bixby and upholding the planning commission's decision to approve the Cox Bungalow project.
I second that motion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further to? Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Soto?
Hi.
Councilmember Cordero?
Hi.
Councilmember Waterfield?
No.
Councilmember Moats?
Hi.
Madam Mayor Patino?
No. Thank you. The next item is a regular business item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will consider a conceptual review of a proposed specific plan amendment.
Excuse me, I've been asked for a five-minute break. So we will take a five-minute break.
It's been three hours. Geez, stand up. You're gonna be here.
And this is adjacent to Winset Farms, which is located to the west. The overall area for Area 9 is about 890 acres and the area highlighted in yellow is about 134 acres. So again, the request is to go from the current designations of M1 and CPO, which is light industrial and commercial professional office, to a proposed designation of an increased number of M1 and another portion for R3 multifamily. This is staff's presentation and the applicant Dan Blau is here. I'll add that we did circulate this for some initial feedback from different departments and there are concerns for the different types of impacts that the added residential would bring. And as far as public safety is concerned, a fire has indicated that this may trigger a new station. The applicant has indicated that he would provide land for that, but we also understand that the funding has not yet been allotted for. Parks and Recreation indicated that the residences would also trigger the need for additional park space. So the new proposals of to change the land use designations would require additional review as far as evaluation of impacts and considerations of mitigations for those impacts. The applicant Dan Blau is here for additional information.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Ing?
Mr. Ing, what's the little green area in the, next to the yellow or orange area?
The little green, little green area is a public facilities and this is a two-acre parcel that's carved out potentially for a future fire station.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Blau, would you like to make any comments?
I would love to. Dan Blau, 2353 A Street. Forgot my address, I'm not there very much. I just want to point out that more than half this property was zone CPO and it's my understanding there was also 550 units of residential, units that were going to be on top of the office buildings as part of the plan. So we're actually going from what was approved to be 550 units down to a maximum of 440 and I doubt seriously that 440 would be built. It's been relatively rare that anybody has actually done 22 units per acre for market rate for condos. More typically, you would see 17 units to the acre. Although, don't be surprised if this ends up being more than one developed in the R3. I could very easily foresee a senior project being part of it. I mean, I like senior projects. As you know, I did Merrill Gardens. I was, I think, pretty instrumental with Robert Barrett in helping her get started on her project at solving. Met her two years before she started that project, so that'd be great. But the main importance is that there is no appetite for CPO in that part of the city. In fact, that would be, I don't know, haven't consumed 80 acres or 70 acres of CPO in the last 20 years, I don't believe. So most of what we're doing here is making this land M1. As far as other conditions, as far as have a park being there, I would agree that you might have to have a park in there if we actually did build out the R3 for its maximum density. But if we did some, part of it is a senior project and part of it is not at that same density, I would question that. And whether you build a park on this property or someplace else, I think Mr. Passata will gladly accept the money and spend it wisely to build a park wherever we need it. I do need to make one small correction. I think, I think the acreage may be just a little bit wrong. I think there's another two acres in that bottom corner. It confused me where that little green part is. And then, do you own that also, that corner? Pardon? Yeah, right, that's the project? Okay, I'll have to go back and look at it. There was, there was some real confusion in this other parcel, I have to tell you the truth, I got two different ones and not sure which one's right. So other than that, I'm here to answer any questions. I know we'll be back with all kinds of data and conditions and that sort of thing going forward. But as you know, it's very expensive to process a project this big and we don't want to do it if there's going to be any blaring concern on your part. I will say, there was one comment here that talked about where we don't have any typical plan development permit items that you would normally get, like elevations or building plans and so forth. And we're probably not going to see that even before, even when we ask you to approve the rezone, reason being, it's 135 acres. I mean, I could easily spend $500,000 in architectural fees, none of which will ever be built, because it's just too big a project, there's just going to be too many parts to it. So I think the zoning, as I've outlined here, is correct and it will be multiple plan development permits that come for you. It's not going to be just one. You'll see various phases and various sections to go through there. And I promised Mr. Stillwell I was going to be quick tonight, because we had some concerns about having you here all night.
Okay, let's see, Ms. Waterfield has a question.
Dan, I didn't hear, how many units did you want to place on this property?
Well, if we do 20 acres of R3, that would be a maximum of 440.
Okay.
What it was approved, when it was approved as, of the specific plan, is 550.
That's what I thought, okay.
That's what it's zoned for now.
Okay. And you would donate land for a fire station?
No.
Oh. I thought, that's what I heard. I tried.
I just told you, Fire Marshal, and I, I, I see that it's here, you will get it at a bargain price, I'll tell you.
That's the word I didn't get.
This is the second time I did this. Your fire station over on Sway, at Sway Crossing?
Yes.
You got it at a bargain price.
Yes, we did.
We paid for it.
Yes, thank you very much, yes.
But it was a bargain. My partners weren't too happy with my price.
Did you, did you have any more questions?
We'll name it the Dan Blau Fire Station.
Did you have any other questions, Ms. Waterfield?
I did not, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'm, can you please explain to me how you came up with how much acreage you'd need, given that there's no site plan, other than just you saying that you need a whole piece of land?
What I was concerned with, I didn't want to put up new industrial land next to the existing residential subdivision. I wanted a buffer there. It's one thing if I sell you or rent you an apartment building when you know it's going to be industrial next door to you, but when you, as you heard in previous hearing today, where people are saying, "What, I bought this and it was going to be a community center and now it's going to be more housing." I don't want to do that, so we'll put a buffer in there so we have residential next to existing residential and the new industrial site, they're going to know it before they ever buy into it. And it was just a matter of picking a number. You know, I'm prepared tonight to make it a little bigger, a little smaller based on the council's wishes, but that's kind of what, that was about the right number for that area.
So you're just here to see, to weigh out what's, to weigh out our thoughts on changing the zoning?
Correct.
For a, for a plan that does not exist yet.
Correct.
But if you made it one of the projects senior housing only?
Low income.
It'd be very enticing.
I'm relatively certain we will do that, only because that's where the market is telling me to go.
Yes, absolutely it is.
Yeah, there is a great need for senior projects, I get it. You know, I listened to Ms. Barrett here a couple of weeks ago, helped me here, when she came and explained her project. I think she has 65 units in her project in there and she had something like 600 applications for those units.
Yeah.
Can I ask another question?
Sure, go ahead.
So you're saying that you're willing to make this, if, you're willing to help add more senior housing, so is that what you're going to say?
Oh, yeah.
So can I ask you, how many, and I'm new to the council, so how many, how many projects or how many development projects have you had completed that are low income in the city of Santa Maria?
Um, I haven't, well, I think I did one about 25 years ago. I haven't really been doing low income projects.
And how many projects have you done in the last 25 years?
Actually, I haven't done any residential projects in some time. I mean, I was involved with Merrill Gardens, I've done condos in Norridge, I've done housing projects in the county. For the most part, the last 15, 20 years has been commercial projects, you know, office buildings, medical buildings, things like that.
Okay.
And I probably won't build this. My job is to help the landlords get it entitled properly, get it zoned properly, help them find developers that'll buy various parts of it and build it out.
Dr. Moats, you had a question?
Yes, and so if you made it senior housing, you wouldn't have to overburn the school system, wouldn't you?
That's one of the things that happens, although they still get their, I think it's 65 cents a square foot now, what do they receive? 47? We still participate, but, yeah.
So, any comment on future use of the M1 area?
Um, not right now.
Okay.
Yeah. Although, I will, I will mention the fact that at the moment, there is less than 1% vacancy rate in Santa Maria for industrial properties right now. It's, that's, if you're, if you're an owner of the landlord, you like that. If you're a user, not healthy. Not healthy. So we're increasing it, it's not at one substantial amount.
Mr. Cordero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also need to report ex parte that I spoke to Mr. Blau about this project several weeks ago. And I did have a couple of questions for you, Mr. Blau. Your plan on doing things from Black to A Street, you're talking about the property immediately south of Winset Farms, that is more affectionately known as Area 9.
Uh, well, the, in that, up there between the blue and the tan color is E Street. Yeah, that's E Street there.
Yes. I understood it was A Street that you were going to take on to? No?
Wait, well, from A Street, that's A Street there, where the pointer is now, going back, they own the property back to E Street.
Okay. So you're taking the property on from E to Black?
No, E, A to E.
A to E?
A to E, correct.
Okay. And you're not currently working on the property adjacent to Winset Farms?
Well, this property is adjacent to Winset Farms. Across the street, across the street from E Street is Winset Farms property.
Okay, the property immediately south of Winset Farms is what I'm talking about. Winset Farms to Betaravia?
No. That's not our, that's not our property.
So you won't be dealing with much of the property at all then, in what we call Area 9?
All of it is Area 9.
All of this is in Area 9.
Okay, let me get to what I really want to know here. Area 9 is, has a lot of oil, capped oil wells in it.
Correct.
So I would, I would dearly like to see that property developed so that, so that we don't longer have to consider anything oil within the city limits, particularly close to residential and schools.
Well, you'll be happy to know that the property owners have, for the past several months, have contacted Dex, Rex Meyer, and all those wells are being checked, capped, identified, they're, they'll go away.
So they're done.
They're done.
Okay. That's my main question, is to, is to make sure that we, we don't have any, somebody else was talking about this the last time I was on the council and they, they assured me that it would be okay, but there's just something about, when Area 9 was in business for, with pumping oil, there were no homes there, there was nothing, that was just land. And now they've got thousands of people living there and I was concerned that these people would have oil wells in their backyard and it might not be healthy in 30 years. That was my concern then and it would be my concern now, and a concern, that's for sure.
And you should know that when we actually do the subdivision on the M1 land, all the wells are going to be identified on the track map and there will be, there will be an identified 10-foot no-build radius around every capped well. Even though the wells in the state is certified that they're safe, we don't want to put a building on top of an existing well and have it leak any kind of natural gas and fill up the structure and then it goes blows up. So there'll be a 10-foot no-build radius around every well, they'll all be identified on the maps, so that you know where they are.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you, sir.
None? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blau. Any written correspondence? No written correspondence. Okay, we do have requests to speak, Mr. Ontiveris. Thank you for spending your evening with us.
It's my pleasure, believe me.
Are you having fun?
You should have brought treats.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. I appreciate the opportunity to speak on this item and particularly the way it's presented because we talked a lot about housing tonight and obviously my concern as the superintendent of schools is, we have the 13 largest elementary schools in Santa Barbara County, in the Santa Maria Benita School District. So the impact, you know, Liberty Schools adjacent to this, it is one of the top five largest schools in Santa Barbara County. Jimenez School, which is only four years old, four years old, we're already overflowing students for next year. So that, you know, the mitigation on schools is, is, is pretty acute. And so I appreciate the recommendation of staff that is part of the general plan review. Maybe we broaden the scope and really, and I appreciate Mr. Blau's comments about, you know, really looking at what are, you know, some flexibility of use to make sure that the needs are being met in a sustainable fashion for, you know, for what the, any additional residential might produce in terms of impact on schools. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'll bring this item back to the council. Any discussion or direction to staff?
Oh, I was just going to say that I too agree with the staff's recommendation. At this point, there is no project associated to this land. I think that as Mr. Ontiveris said, we're getting ready to update our general plan and this is going to require us to really take a holistic view of the city and how we, we want to grow. Right now, it's not clear how a zoning change of Area 9 will fit into the general plan update. We know that we need commercial and industrial space for future job growth and future and further analysis is needed, especially given the concerns expressed by the school district and the additional strain that this will add to our public safety and our recreation and parks department. We should not jump the gun and rezone without proper analysis.
Ms. Waterfield, do you have?
I think this is a great project. It's been sitting there for a long, long time, trying to make hay out of something. And Dan, I trust you. I trust what you have brought forward. I trust how you protect the city of Santa Maria first and foremost, before you bring a project forward. And, you know, we've gone maybe around and around on a few things, but we've always come to a good conclusion for the city of Santa Maria. So I'm excited to see what you're doing in the lab right now, behind closed doors with your white coat on and trying to come up with this, this great idea. And I know you've got it upstairs, already planned out, but I think it's something that I would like to see come forward.
Can I have here, may I?
Sure, go ahead.
I'm sorry, just before, I forgot. Earlier today, we were presented with the Hourglass project, that's really exciting for our region. And I remember that during the campaign trail, I was, when I met with Glenn Morris for the first time with the Chamber of Commerce, I remembered him sharing that we're running out of space to put new businesses here in the city of Santa Maria. And so if we're really looking at job growth and, you know, as we're, as we're talking about increase of population here within the city of Santa Maria, we have to have these conversations as well of how, what jobs and where are we going to house these jobs that are needed for the added population growth. And so, also to Mr. Cordero's point about oil, you know, I completely agree and I would hate to see, even if they're capped oil wells, I would not want to see any homes or schools built on top of that. I certainly wouldn't want to live on top of that.
You do.
Is that all of it? Well, then, I should move. But we've seen what's happened, is it Sunrise?
Yes.
Right, what we've seen there and I would hate for that to happen again.
It happened at Sunrise and it happened off of, just north of Bauer Estates also.
Yeah. Okay. Any other comments?
Well.
Dr. Moats?
I'm in full support of the project too. I think, well, whatever we see of the project.
Whatever it is, yeah.
But we're going to get some nice condominiums and middle-level housing, which we need. You know, I'm sort of in favor of almost any housing project, because we need housing. And the M1, you know, it's not like this land isn't being used. I was overlooking it on Sunday, I mean, that's been an under cultivation. That's what I call prime ag land. I'm sure it's been used for decades. And I think this is one of the benefits of not having LAFCO dictate to us what we can do, because if this were in the county and we tried to convert prime ag land into manufacturing and residential, that would be very difficult to do. Is this in the Williamson Act or anything like that? It's all out of the Williamson Act?
Yeah.
And it's, it's, it's ready to roll?
Yep.
Yeah. Well, it's going to provide housing, it's going to provide a place for job creation. I think it's great.
Any comments, Mr. Cordero?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I think we can't go without giving some strong consideration to the impact this could have on our school system. I happen to be closely acquainted with the school district. And I, I think that not only does it have an impact, but I mean, it has an impact on the end result of what, what the product that the school district is able to put out, our future. And so, so, you know, schools and land for schools is not easy to come by, so I say that to say this, that the more people that are allowed in there with senior housing would probably prevent some, some of that impact. And I also did some quick math here, Mr. Blau, and as I, as I figure this out, donation of the property for the fire department also equals out to a bargain price. Just wanted to throw that in there. No, 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 no bad language.
Is this a rebuttal?
Just to say, going to talk to your dad? We'll do it. Yeah, okay. We'll work on it.
Okay. I, I, I would be in favor of the project and I would certainly hope that we're able to keep in our mind the impacts that it has that could be termed as detrimental to any part of our, our delivery system in the city, not only school district.
Okay, thank you. So if you have the, the, our feeling about the conceptual review, Mr. Ing, Mr. Blau?
I believe we just need to give, turn me permission to process the project for me.
Yeah, well, we, we may change our mind if you come back in six months, so.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
We don't need any motion on that, just a approval.
No, we don't, we're just a conceptual review. The next, next item is a regular business item. Madam Kirk, could you please read the title?
The city council will consider authorizing the implementation of the Community Choice Aggregation Program, requesting membership in the Monterey Bay Community Joint Powers Authority.
Okay, staff report is being made by Assistant City Manager, Mr. Wymiller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tonight, we have an informational presentation for you involving potential for the city of Santa Maria to participate in the Community Choice Aggregation Program. And just the bottom line of this is it's an opportunity for us to make available to all of our residents that are within the PG&E service area to save money on their bills. And so, part of the action tonight is not only this informational presentation you're going to hear, but we'll have the opportunity, if you so wish, to take steps to join the Monterey Bay Community Power, Joint Powers Authority. And again, if you are willing to have first reading of an ordinance to implement community choice aggregation here within the city of Santa Maria. I'd like to introduce J.R. Kilgore with Monterey Bay Community Power.
Community College.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor and council members. I have the illustrious pleasure of entertaining you with electricity at what time, almost nine o'clock on a, on a beautiful Tuesday night, so I look forward to the presentation. My name is J.R. Kilgore, I'm the Director of Communications and Energy Programs at Monterey Bay Community Power. And again, it's an honor to be here. The name may be a little misleading, because right now, we're in the process of engaging the other, all of San Luis Obispo County, as well as Guadalupe, and we are certainly opening to rebranding to Central Coast, something a little more synonymous with the whole region. So I just wanted to kind of set the stage before I get started. One thing I'd like to do very quickly is to introduce the concept of how the electrical grid works, because when you talk about electricity, it's a very esoteric thing. It's not tangible like water molecules are. So effectively, think about it as one big bathtub and you have hundreds of energy suppliers all across the state, as well as the neighboring states. I actually was just looking at the California Energy Commission's map of 2017 electric load in the state of California. We actually import 30% of our electric needs from neighboring states. We don't produce it all within the state of California. So think about it as one big bathtub, where you have suppliers putting electrons into this big bathtub and then through the transmission and distribution system, which is owned by the investor on utilities, those electrons are pulled out of the, the big bathtub and then sent to the homes and businesses. So we are a big part of the bathtub and think about the concept of the type of electrons that you put in that bathtub in terms of whether they come from renewable resources or fossil fuel resources. Now, in terms of what community choice aggregation is, because that's effectively what you're here to learn about tonight, it is something that was enacted in the state legislature back in 2002 called Assembly Bill 117, that allowed for local governments or government entities to create a joint powers authority to serve the electrical needs of their residents and businesses. That's effectively what community choice aggregation is. It allows you to kind of municipalize one portion of the electric paradigm to help deliver cost savings to your customers and your constituents. Now, what it is and how it works, it is a partnership. When we talk about customers, we talk about shared customers. There are Monterey Bay Community Power customers, as well as PG&E customers. So the way it works effectively is we go out and source electricity that's then put in there in that big bathtub. PG&E transmit distributes those electrons through the grid and then voila, you still, you get those electrons in your home and you actually get the same blue bill that everybody will get. It's not going to come in different colors or shapes or sizes, it still comes from PG&E. So effectively, it's the same service, but we deliver a lower price on the electric generation side. So why in the world would you consider something like this? Maybe the model's working, just like it is now, maybe it's not, but at the end of the day, you don't have a choice right now. You just have Pacific Gas and Electric for your electric service. You don't have a voice at the table in terms of how PG&E decides to do things. They have to go to the CPUC and then the CPUC grants them the authority to do something and then you're basically just kind of saddled with whatever you have. You don't have any competition in the marketplace right now in terms of deriving cost savings to your constituents. And last but not, certainly not least, you don't have community-based programs that you folks get to elect and help reinvest in your community under the current model. So who we are in a nutshell, we are, as Jason, Jason and Patrick mentioned, we are a joint powers authority of the 16 cities and the three counties of the Monterey Bay region, but most recently, the cities of San Luis Obispo and Morro Bay joined our joint powers authority. We'll be serving them in early 2020 and that's half of the reason why we're coming down here, is because we want the same benefits that the cities of San Luis Obispo and Morro Bay can have, as well as Slow County and as well as northern Santa Barbara County. How we're governed, very quickly, we have three boards. Policy Board is of elected officials, Operations Board of city managers and county administrator officers, and then we have a wonderful community advisory council of community members that help shape the programs and the reinvestments we make in our region. Right now, we have a shared board structure, which means if you have a population of over 50,000, you get a solitary seat, like the city of Santa Maria has. But if you're under 50,000, you have a shared seat based on the geography. So right now, the cities of San Luis Obispo and Morro Bay have a shared seat where currently the, the city of San Luis Obispo is that board representation, but we always rotate every... the City of San Luis Obispo is that board representation, but we always rotate every two years. So, every city has an opportunity to be on the board. In terms of the power mix, again, want to recognize PG&E has a very clean power mix right now. There are almost 80% from clean energy sources. Again, they're putting 80% of clean electrons out of the bathtub. We had from the get-go, 100% clean electrons going on the bathtub. Again, it's just another opportunity to help clean up the big bathtub. One big thing is the questions about, are you building new renewable energy projects in the state of California? That's a big question that we have. Recently, we've signed three pretty significant contracts for about 500 megawatts worth of renewable energy. And actually, we are the first utility to contract for the largest solar plus battery storage project in the history of California. And we've been only in operations for about 15 months. That's gonna be in Kings County. And the three renewable projects we have that will be coming online in 2021, will be able to meet about 20% of our annual electric needs. Now, one thing is, is we always get questions about how can you compete with PG&E? Why, how does this work? Well, we're actually just following the municipal utility model. If you look at all the different municipal utilities across the state of California, whether it's LADWP, Sacramento Municipal Utility District, all those folks, by and large, on average, they're 25% less expensive than PG&E. I want that to sink in for a second. It's not we're reinventing anything, because we're not-for-profit, and because we don't have the corporate structure like PG&E does, the number of employees, again, they do a lot of great work, we're not discrediting anything along those lines at all. We're just saying, we can take that one portion of the bill where folks really aren't benefiting from, and find a way to reduce the cost and deliver that to the customer while still maintaining that relationship with PG&E, who can profit from, who does profit from the delivery and the transmission grid. Very quickly about our budget, we bring in about $220 million of revenue. That is from the ratepayers. We are not taxpayer-funded at all. The majority of our budget goes to energy expenses, that's 75%. We have a lean operation, 5% for administrative costs. And then, last but not least, we have a 20% surplus right now that is basically broken into three buckets. Local energy programs, which is about four and a half million dollars. Customer savings, rebates, that's $8 million, and the remaining goes to our cash reserves. Now, when I talk about our cash reserves, we have a goal of hitting, we are a very fiscally conservative agency. We are all about making sure that we are a sound financial, a financially sound agency that can be here for the long run. Right now, we have about $60 million in cash reserves. We estimate that we'll be able to get to $100 million by the end of that year. Once we hit that target, we now have enough in operating reserves to basically keep moving forward, but also reinvest, put that money back in the community through rebates and programs. So, right now, we have a budget philosophy that's really catering towards hitting that reserve target. But once we do, that surplus of $40 million a year now gets split in half for $20 million for programs, and $20 million for customer bill savings. And that's just for our current service area. Very quickly, our service offerings, so by default, all the customers, whether residents, business, agricultural customers, you name it, even tacos at Tison, that actually had dinner at tonight over there, it was great, they will all become our customers by default. Now, you're probably questioning, what is by default made of? Per state law, all eligible PG&E customers for the generation side will become Monterey Bay Community Power customers. It's an opt-out program. I don't want to gloss over that or kind of hide from it. It's not a perfect choice, a perfect setup for choice, but at least it gives you that option to be enrolled in our program, investigated. If you don't like it, you can go back to PG&E at any time. Now, the rebate, I've said this a lot of times, so on a monthly basis, we match PG&E's rates. So, whatever you're gonna pay with PG&E, you're gonna pay with us for electric generation. But we then basically, each account gets a little kind of piggy bank, that about, it's 3% of those electric generation charges get stowed away every month. And then, based on the customer you are, you then get it as a bill credit. It basically shows up on the bill, you get a reduction in your costs. So, for residential customers, you get it once a year in December, it's a nice kind of holiday treat. Small to medium businesses get it semi-annually in June and December. And then, large agricultural and commercial customers get it quarterly, so March, June, September, and December. As I mentioned earlier, we put back almost $4.4 million last year in customer bill savings through those, through the rebate credits. I want to walk you through the bill, because everybody always gets startled, like, well, what's gonna happen with the bills? Are they gonna come differently? Absolutely not. It comes in the same blue bill as it went with PG&E, but I think this will point to you. There's number three, which is, that's the new line item. We then replace what PG&E would have charged you for electric generation charges. So, again, it's just a new line item. The second page is the same, outlining the delivery charges. The third page, the most important thing about this, this is the page that PG&E would have for your delivery, as well as the generation costs. They put a credit back on this portion of the bill to credit you back what you would have paid them, so that people end up paying exactly what they would have paid with PG&E. We have a lot of concerns that our page is a duplicate charge. Unequivocally, it is not. It is just a replacement page for the electric generation charges. As you can see, we have a nice little page that just talks about our generation charges. Now, I wanted to do a snapshot. These are actual customer bills with the actual MBCP rebate that was applied. Again, for a normal residential customer, sure, they get six bucks off that bill, but it was only for five months of service. Still something to be able to point to and be like, hey, I'm getting some savings. A small to medium business got about $173 of a bill credit. Again, that was for about six months' worth of generation charges taken off. And then, this one, I'm not kidding, and this is one on the smaller scale, a large industrial company got $14,000 taken off their bill. I know some agricultural customers, because when you look at our largest 20 customers, it's predominantly agricultural. And I say unequivocally, we've helped save one business $100,000, another business $75,000, another business $55,000, another business $45,000. And actually, some of our member agencies, like County of Monterey, County of Santa Cruz, County of San Benito, those member agencies collectively saved almost $300,000 off of their municipal accounts. So, that's what the city also has available to itself if it's looking forward to move forward. Not only can it help your constituents save money, but also your municipal accounts will benefit from it. And this is, it's, I'm not kidding, and this is a conservative estimate. So, what we did is we looked at, basically, the City of San Luis Obispo and said, well, based on kind of the makeup of residential and commercial customers, why not double that as kind of a barometer for the City of Santa Maria? You folks probably consume more electricity than even two San Luis Obispo's put together, but that was our best guess. And if you do vote to join our agency and you're approved, we will go and get that load data from PG&E and be able to provide you a little more accurate figures. But, under a scenario where folks get a 3% rebate for the first two years of service, and then it ratches it up to 8%, you'd be effectively helping your residential customers save over $3 million over five years. The business community, over a five-year period, 8 million. You're looking at $11 million of customer savings over a five-year period with effectively no upfront investment outside of a vote. And then, under a scenario where you scale it up to 4%, I think the number's to speak for yourself, almost $12 million over a five-year period. Discount programs, a lot of people ask, what's gonna happen to my CARE FARA, LaHee Medical Baseline? All of those stay the same, you don't need to reapply. The City of Salinas, which is our current, the largest city we serve, I think 30% of residential customers are on CARE and FARA. That means they're on low-income customers. They're really benefiting from this rebate, even if it is a couple bucks. But I just wanted to mention that, because they are a pretty, they have such a wide variety of income levels in the City of Salinas, that folks are really benefiting from that. Rooftop solar customers, folks who have solar, very quickly, we actually pay more than PG&E does if you produce more energy than you consume. So, think about it very easily, the easiest way to think about it is, if on an annual basis, you produce 1,000 units of excess energy that goes to the grid, we'll pay you $61, PG&E will pay you $29, just a little more to help kind of support rooftop solar. But if you consume more energy than you produce on your rooftop solar, you get that rebate applied to that margin. So, you'll be effectively receiving more through our program, or getting, or paying less through our program than PG&E. Quick snapshot, in terms of, I just wanted to do a highlight of the residential cost comparison between PG&E and MCP. On the top row, it's the generation rate. As you can see, we're significantly less than PG&E. The delivery rates are the same, but there's something called the PCIA. That basically is a charge that the investor-owned utilities levy on all customers when they depart service from the investor-owned utility, to make the current PG&E customers indifferent. It's basically, imagine if somebody made a huge investment on your behalf, and then you go hot-tail it to something else, then basically, you now have to kind of make up for that margin. It's a fair business practice. We're not against it, we're just against how it's calculated, and some of the black boxness of like, how do you arrive at that 3.3 cents per kilowatt hour? But I think the bottom line I want to show you is the annual net cost of electricity with our shared service versus bundled PG&E service, were less. Some accomplishments, I think it's all about local choice, supporting economic vitality, local support of businesses, job creation, financial stability, and clean energy. The one I want to talk about is our support of local businesses. Right now, we've put back almost over a half a million dollars of local contracts, and we continually want to do this. We want to source all sorts of local businesses, like, we're doing a full website redesign, and we basically went with the local vendor, even though we had a lot of outside businesses that wanted to vie for our business. But we want to support local businesses through our RFP process, and through all the different ways we can reinvest. Now, energy programs is something very near and dear to my heart. What we do is we set aside 2% of revenue for local programs that helps electrify, whether it's homes, businesses, you name it. We have an electric vehicle incentive program right now, that's about a million, and over a million dollars of incentives to help folks get into electric vehicles. And we're actually supporting 20 affordable housing customers with no-cost solar right now. We've got about 16 of them installed, we've got four more going. They're in Greenfield, Hollister, Salinas, a lot of the areas that are definitely income strapped, and so, we're trying to provide additional ways to reinvest to help low-income customers. The Smart Connects microgrid program is another really interesting one, speaking about the Hourglass Project and economic opportunities. Think about this as nothing more than a way for us to basically island an industrial warehouse or an agricultural business that wants to expand operations, and they become completely self-sufficient from the grid. We've had a lot of big customers say, hey, I want to expand operations, it takes too long in the PG&E queue, what can you folks do for me? So, imagine an opportunity for business to be able to stay in the city, because they have a utility that can help support, expand their operations, and then bring in and hire more local jobs. And now, in terms of enrollment, by law, we only have to send four mailers, but we do a ton of community outreach. We get to know all of the community-based organizations. I actually presented to the Santa Maria Valley Chamber yesterday morning, it was an honor just to engage with those folks. But we really do as much as possible to educate folks, whether it's through events and workshops, sponsorships, as well as our, we have a great call center that's based in Monterey. We really do as much as we can. Again, we can't promise we'll be able to reach everyone, but we do reach a lot of people very quickly. And I think, I just want to touch upon, I think, one of the most interesting outreach efforts right now, that nobody else in the state of California is doing, is we have a bi-weekly farmworker lunch outreach, where we basically go to farms all across the Monterey Bay region, and we provide lunch and all sorts of opportunities for folks to learn about electricity. We basically engage 200, about 200 farmworkers every week, who otherwise would never have heard about our program, or never been reached out to. So, at this point, we would love to be able to expand that, because we see a lot of similarities between all the counties in the Central Coast, especially being such a rich agricultural engine. So, we want to make sure that not only do we support the big agricultural businesses, but we also support the workers that are helping to move this region forward. In terms of timeline, we have been working very hard to educate as many folks as possible. Effectively, what it boils down to is, we have to submit documentation to the California Public Utility Commission, that has an updated plan about how we're gonna serve customers, as well as update our joint powers authority to include new cities or counties. So, effectively, we have a deadline of doing the adoption of the resolution and the two readings of ordinance by the middle of August, so we can submit all that documentation to the CPUC, so that we can start serving customers in early 2021. And right now, we have a shared cost structure for any city or county that wants to join. It would be between $5,000 to $7,500 to help pay for the two amendments of those two plans. And we hope that we can get everybody together in one fell swoop, and then have a really amazing enrollment in early 2021. Now, I just want to land very quickly about a unified Central Coast program. We want to make sure that all the benefits, whether you're in the City of San Luis Obispo or the City of Santa Maria, or potentially Guadalupe, we want all the customers to benefit from the same type of rebate and the same type of programs. We are here to help you make a business decision to allow your constituents to save money. That's effectively what's on the table for you today. And also, you now have a seat at the table. As a city of that size, you will have a single seat on our board, all three boards, so you'd be able to make kind of decisions that would be able to kind of reverberate down to this area, as well as up there in terms of the needs of the city like Santa Maria. So, on that note, I hopefully was as efficient with time as I could. This is a lot to take in, but I'm more than happy to answer any questions, and I'm at your disposal.
Thank you. Any questions?
I do, Madam Mayor.
Ms. Waterfield?
So, you're gonna be using PG&E infrastructure to deliver your product?
Yeah, yeah, effectively, they own the poles and the wires, as they call it, and so, but effectively, everybody's using PG&E's poles and wires, because electrons move from Southern California up North, and then vice versa. So, it's really a part of kind of one collective network that's all leveraging the infrastructure.
Is PG&E excited about this project? Are they something that just they're pushing as well?
Well, there is something called the Code of Conduct that was put into the legislature in 2013, that didn't allow either us nor PG&E to kind of lobby for or against each other. We have to be neutral. But effectively, when it started off, they were very much against it. But right now, there are 19 other community choice agencies across the state, serving over 10 million people. And it's forecasted by 2025, 85% of the entire state of California will be served by both an investor-owned utility for delivery, and then a community choice energy agency. So, this is something that's happened very quickly, and the whole point is to deliver cost savings and opportunities for the customers.
So, are you, your purpose is to just push everybody into that one direction? And does that just leave PG&E standing alone?
No, because they, all their profit comes from the transmission and delivery side of the business. So, if anything, kind of taking the generation side out of their books can help them focus more on the infrastructure and where they profit from.
Okay. Because right now, I think you can, PG&E customers, can't you check a box right now for their renewable energies?
Yeah.
So, then, why would we put a third party involved, being the CCEs?
Well, yeah, so you're talking about PG&E solar choice, because there are a couple options. Those are more expensive.
And you're gonna be much, much lower?
Yep.
And does that include the solar panels that someone would have on their house as well?
Yes.
Interesting, okay.
Dr. Moats?
Yeah, explain to me again, how you, as a sort of a startup energy-producing company, can take on PG&E with all their legacy things, and presumably paid off energy-producing facilities, and do it cheaper than PG&E? I mean, how do you do that?
Yeah, that's completely fair. I mean, I think we all have to acknowledge that in order to get the marketplace moving along renewable energy, all investor-owned utilities had to basically take on very expensive legacy contracts to kind of get the marketplace going. You know, it's a, it's a, it's a timing thing. We basically have entered into the marketplace where renewable energy, that solar plus storage project that we've signed on is less than natural gas. And so, what happens is, is you don't have PG&E building new projects, because all their load is departed to a network of community choice programs. And so, we're just at an opportunistic time to be able to kind of leverage low-cost renewable energy and deliver that to our customers. So, it's a, it's a timing thing. But I think we all need to acknowledge the amount of effort and investment that PG&E put into these type of projects to kind of get us to where we are in terms of, overall, we're 30% renewable, and then by 2060, we're gonna, 2030, we'll have to be 60% renewable.
Well, I guess this must be an epiphany for me, but you're telling me that solar power can generate electricity less expensively than natural gas?
Right now, yep.
Really?
Dr. Moats, I might point out also...
Dr. Moats, I might point out also that PG&E is a for-profit entity and they have to pay taxes. So they're making profits for shareholders and paying taxes on those profits. This is a nonprofit entity. So part of the savings is because of that model in addition to the fact that we probably have more, we would have more efficient energy projects and some of those still being relied on by PG&E.
And to look at all of the type of construction that's being done around renewable projects, no utilities are owning, like they're not taking on the financial risk or responsibility of owning anything anymore. They're moving into what they call power purchase agreements. Like you look at PG&E's Topaz project, that's a power purchase agreement. The California Flats, which is in Southern Monterey County, that's another, Apple took a part of it and then it's a power purchase agreement. So they enter into a 15 or 20-year long-term contract at a fixed price and then that's how they kind of rate base back to the customer. So nobody's moving into kind of owning and operating assets anymore. It's more about leveraging developers to do that and then entering into a long-term contract.
How does the possible impending bankruptcy of PG&E affect you or the transmission of the power?
Yeah, that's a very reasonable question. So the bankruptcy judge who's presiding over it, they looked at it, there's two buckets of funds. There's public purpose funds, which basically that's for energy efficiency, you know, rebates, whatever you want to call it, as well as, as well as community choice energy revenue. Those are all deemed as kind of public purpose funds. So there was, we don't have any liability to the creditors as it relates to the PG&E bankruptcy and that was strictly about wildfire liability. So on our side of the portion, we're completely, we're sheltered from that bankruptcy in that sense in terms of the creditors trying to come after us because it's two different items.
I guess one other question. So you're here giving us, you know, your viewpoint on the Monterey Bay power and you're going into competition with PG&E for producing the power. But why isn't someone representative from PG and here telling us why, you know, we should go with, stay with PG&E?
Yeah, as I mentioned earlier, unfortunately, they're, they normally decline to come and based on the situation at hands. I've never been at a city council meeting where a PG&E representative has ever been there. They really kind of stay out of this as much as possible to be agnostic for it. So they allow, again, I know you're probably saying, well, that doesn't seem to be a fair shake, but at the end of the day, that's the setup right now.
Really? Because the two of you are competing for our money to get the cheapest generation of electricity, yet they don't send a representative to compete with you and give them, give us their side of the story?
Yep.
You know what? I'm wondering if that's, did that have anything to do with the 2013 where there, you guys are banned from speaking in public together and lobbying? I think that might have something to do with it. If you were here, they can't be here. So it's not because they don't show up because they don't want to, they cannot show up because of that 2013 bill.
Well, that's a silly bill.
It totally is.
And I, trust me, I have a lot of great contacts at PG&E and I tell them every time we're going to a city council meeting, like, hey, we're going to be there, we'd love to have you there as well. And they're like, I can't. And so I, it's just, it's unfortunate because we like them to be here. It's not something that we, we're here trying to not have a fair shake for every city or county that's looking at this.
And really, I mean, our job is not to be looking out for the best interest of PG&E, a huge corporation. Our job is to be looking out for the best interests of the residents of Santa Maria and the cost savings that they will be receiving.
Well, I agree.
Yeah.
But we should have the other side of the story too and then we get to decide which one we want it to is.
Okay. Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's a little monster living in the back of my head here. And, you know, you know the old adage that if it sounds too good to be, to be correct, that it probably isn't, you know? This sounds great. It sounds just fantastic. Sign me up is what I think I would be wanting to say, but so this, it all comes together very succinctly in listening to what you have to say and what I heard about this earlier. So when you said we could opt out of this project, I can opt out of it as an individual person, say, no, I'm going to stay with PG&E. Can we as a council opt out and just say, hey, we're out of here? We didn't know this balloon payment was coming and we're scared now, so we're gone. We can do that, that simple?
Yeah, so if I understand correctly, if you were to say as a council, as a JPA, as a Joint Powers Authority member, can we depart the Joint Powers Authority?
Yes.
Is that, that's really what you're getting at?
Yes.
Okay. Effectively, the answer is yes. It has to do with timing. So if you were to go move forward with joining Monterey Bay Community Power this year and then say sometime in June, and actually I had this same conversation with the mayor of Atascadero because she had the same sentiment, the mayor of Paso Robles had the same sentiment, the mayor of Guadalupe actually had the same sentiment. You're all in the same boat in terms of like, this is too good to be true, like I totally understand and empathize with it. But what, there's, there's three scenarios that I'm going to present to you. One, you join the JPA, we file the paperwork, the CPUC, they certify, we've got a great network of Central Coast communities and then say next June, you're like, I don't want to have anything to do with this. I'm just done. I don't want my, the city to be a part of this. You effectively are allowed to basically move forward with a new resolution to dissolve membership in Monterey Bay Community Power. There would, the only cost we would then say is, well, now we have to go back and amend the implementation plan and the Joint Powers Authority. So we respectfully ask the city to pay for those costs. That's scenario one. Scenario two, which is a little more daunting, which is say if we enroll customers in January 2021 and then in June of 2021, you say, I'm not getting enough of the savings, I want to get out of this. We've already entered into contracts on your behalf for your customer base, for the customer base here. And it would be basically looking at whatever we'd enter into contracts for your customer base and then whatever we'd have to unload it on the wholesale market, much like I mentioned about that PCIA. So there'd be some chunk of money that ultimately the city would have to be, would be liable for under that very extreme circumstance. But alternatively, if we bought the power really inexpensively, but then all of a sudden prices went up, we make out well, we say, you know, thanks for, thanks for, you know, being a part of this for a short amount of time and then you just have to take care of the implementation plan. The third option, which is what I told the city of Atascadero as well as any mayor or city council member that said, just opt out. You folks can opt out all of your municipal accounts, you can go on a blitz to tell all the residents and businesses to opt out. You still maintain the seat, but you effectively depart all of the load, any of the liability that would be associated with your seat. So effectively, if in say four or five years, whatever we entered into contracts, if all the load's been departed, then you effectively don't have any liability. So it's sort of three very wild scenarios that are very realistic because that's, your job is to investigate and ask the tough questions and make sure you can understand your risk tolerance about it. But again, we have 175 different cities and counties a part of these 19 agencies. Not one has ever even hinted at leaving. If anything, the folks who say, I don't like this, like the county in Monterey was a 3-2 vote, it was a very contentious vote. Their, even their county administrative officer was not really pleased about this. He's one of our biggest proponents now. So it's understandable to have doubts about it, to have that little monster in your head to say, this sounds too good to be true. But everyone's felt like that because it is a new, it is a new concept because we're not the bill. Now, if the bill came from us, it'd be a much different story because then everybody would open it and they'd see a bill for Monterey Bay Community Power and not PG&E. But I think at the end of the day, as I mentioned, it is about the cost savings. It's about hopefully giving folks an opportunity to save some money and access additional revenue for reinvestment.
Okay. Now, I'd like to ask a question and reduce it down to the, to the single customer, the single family dwelling that has the solar on their house.
Yep.
I think my electric bill is like nine or 10 bucks or something like that now. It depends on the time of the year. What happens to that customer when your rebates come around and those kinds of things? What happens to that customer?
Yeah, so depending on the type of net energy metering customer, or they call them, we try, I try to avoid acronyms as much as possible. But you either have an annual true-up, so whenever your solar system was interconnected, they flipped the switch, basically one year from that date, you basically get trued up. It's an account balance between the amount of kilowatt hours you produce and the amount of kilowatt hours you consume from the grid. Now you have to pay like a monthly, it's a monthly maintenance fee to PG&E. So you don't pay us for anything right now. And so on that annual true-up, now if, say if you owed, let's just say $200 because you produce, you consume more than you produce, whatever that portion of electric generation is, you get a 3% rebate, you get a rebate off of it, so your bill goes down. Now, if you produce more than you consume, we just pay you out more than PG&E would under that scenario. So effectively, everything stays the same. There's no difference in rate structure or billing cadence or anything like that. It's just the amount of money that you would either be compensated for or pay out is more favorable.
So it's all big, whatever happens is based on the true-up time?
Yep.
On the true-up stats?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Madam.
Dr. Moats?
Yeah. So it sounds like your business model is better than PG&E's because you can produce a product. It's cheaper. Why would anyone stay with PG&E? And ultimately, is PG&E a viable organization to produce power? Is it going to be reduced to just transmission of power?
Yeah, I mean, that conversation is being held at the CPUC right now at the state level of, of looking at the vertically integrated investor on utility model and seeing if customers and the whole state would benefit from this new paradigm, which is you have a locally controlled community choice energy going out and generating the electricity and then the investor on utility, the for-profit entity handling the transmission and distribution lines. So I think it's just an opportunity to improve the model and give you folks an opportunity to save money and have a voice in terms of what can be reinvested and how you can be a part of this agency, whereas right now, you don't have that at all.
One other question? Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Did you say that there's part of the assembly vote was to make it so that CCEs and companies like PG&E can't lobby against one another?
Yeah, it's lobbying, yeah.
Sorry. So does that mean that if you were to leave tonight and we, like would they, legally, they be able to come in afterwards after we've spoken to you?
That is a good question. The last time someone asked me that, I, it's kind of up to the local rep and kind of, they'll have to move it up the food chain to see if they'd be willing to do that. But yeah, I mean, I think it'd be certainly worth the exploration if you felt like that was the direction.
Any questions? Mr. Cordero?
I forgot to ask you this earlier. You said that you currently have a reinvestment program to where you reinvest in the community and one of those things you've done, or Monterey Powers done, is to go in and provide rooftop solar for some of these places. You've been sitting here tonight and you've seen how many, how many structures we approved essentially to go forward with tonight. Is there a possibility that some of that could be put on some of these facilities? And I say that, I ask that question because I know that there's a certain amount of issues going on that are time-sensitive in getting into the system in time. Is that possible that something like that could happen here?
Yeah, potentially. I mean, the way, the way our programs are set up like Project Sunshine is that basically we, we work with a variety of different stakeholders every year. So we work with the tourism, hospitality industry, the healthcare industry, the public, the public sector, as well as the ag sector and then, you know, groups that represent disadvantaged constituents. And we take all that information, we kind of figure out, well, what is everybody's needs based on the programs? And then we kind of sit down with our community advisory council and kind of present some ideas and thoughts and opportunities. And then from there, they give us some direction as to where to go with it. And then we come back with a suite of programs, which in this particular case, one of them was Project Sunshine. And then that was approved by our board, our policy board. So at that point, a chunk of the programs dollars would set aside for, you know, putting rooftop solar on for income qualifying customers. So every year, we have that conversation about how to reinvest the four to $5 million a year that we have. And so it's a really good conversation because let me tell you, it's, not only do folks get to save on a rebate and a customer savings, but then they know that their dollars that are going towards Monterey Bay Community Power is coming back to their community.
So it's possible?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Questions? Okay. Any, no further questions? Okay. Do we have any written correspondence?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Staff received two written communications. One from the Director of Community Development for the County of Santa Barbara indicating that the county was working on the feasibility of launching a locally-run community choice energy program that could consist of the city of Santa Maria and they were waiting on new data to be available within weeks. The director has asked that the city council not take action on this item this evening to allow for the county to present the county's studies, studies result to the council when they become available. And the second one is from the Executive Director of the Community Environmental Council supporting the city's interest in joining a community choice program to provide cleaner energy to its residents and businesses. The letter also suggested that the city consider joining a program more focused on the specific needs of the county, of county residents if the county of Santa Barbara decides to launch its program.
Thank you. And I have six requests to speak. Abraham Melendez, followed by Jeannie Sparks.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. My name is Abraham Melendez and with cause. Joining a community choice power authority not only allows community members to choose cleaner energy sources for themselves, but creates a more efficient and responsible energy choice that is accountable to residents, not shareholders. We have seen how big corporations like PG&E have monopolized our energy in cities like Santa Maria and are now filing for bankruptcy for the second time. Joining this community energy group would create local control, accountability and choice for residents in Santa Maria. Community choice will still give Santa Maria residents the opportunity to stay with PG&E if they're happy with their services, but it would also allow environmentally conscious residents to choose how much clean energy they want for their homes while at the same time allowing residents who don't worry about energy sources to still benefit from potentially lower rates. Even if the city decided to maintain a similar ratio of clean and dirty energy that PG&E might use as they use for default for residents, as a default, rates for Santa Marias would likely improve because there are no corporate middlemen taking a cut from residents' pockets. As an example, Simi Valley decided to keep the same rate of energy and fossil energy sources as Edison Energy in the South, but still saw decreasing rates compared to corporate energy. I think the choice really is clear about whether we want to represent our communities and look out for them or private shareholders. We strongly agree with the city staff recommendation requesting to join MDCP. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeannie Sparks, followed by David Dennis.
Hi, I'm Jeannie Sparks. I'm representing Santa Barbara County Action Network. We are in favor of the city joining a community choice energy project and we think this project is a very favorable one. I just heard that the county is asking you to hold off and I'm always interested in what the county's going to do. I know they're being, they have been studying it so that, I don't know which one would be better, but I would encourage you to join, if not this one, then the county. Community choice energy gives you local control, freedom of choice, lower rates, clean energy and the incentive to develop local power generation, which is an economic development vehicle as well. So this money that, they're talking about reinvesting in doing your local energy, that's, that is a local development, that is an economic development. And the interesting thing is, he talked about microgrids for businesses. The city could eventually get a microgrid. If you have enough local power generation sources, you can have a microgrid. And then if your transmission line goes down, the one that feeds us now goes down, you've still got the microgrid. still got the microgrid to run your power. And PG&E was looking, doing hearings just a few months ago, well, several months ago, I guess, as to where they should put the new transmission lines and upgrade everything, and they didn't come up with anything, because there's a matter of a lot of property that they'd have to pass through, and it didn't happen. But eventually, that's going to degrade, and that could become a problem. So it would be good to look into eventually doing a microgrid to where we could be independent and produce all that here. So Santa Maria became a charter city in 2000. One of the reasons was for local self-government, and saying that economic and fiscal independence for local government, for the health and safety and welfare of its citizens. And doing that, becoming a charter city, was another way that they could have more flexibility in purchasing services and developing services. They have the, and it even says in the charter, you have the power to develop any utility or to purchase whatever services are best for the city. I would say that this is one of those opportunities, to take local control and purchase the services that the city citizens would need. And just to mention that Lompoc did this years ago, they had their, they started their own power utility, they're part of a consortium. They say that they're saving 30%, a third of what it would cost to be with PG&E. It's the wave of the future. Let's show that we have vision, let's become leaders in this, and let's develop community-choice energy. Thank you.
Thank you. David Dennis, followed by Elizabeth Schneider, followed by Roy Reed.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. My name is David Dennis. I'm a resident. I live at 416 East Hermosa Street here in Santa Maria, and I'd like to see you support this. When you look at, I guess, the sales pitch as it was, the idea of savings to ratepayers is pretty hard to beat. The idea of local power generation and programs that could help locally has some benefits. The idea of clean energy certainly is something that we need to move toward. And I'm reminded that just a short while ago, the city approved their own solar development, and when I heard the information about how the net metering worked, that that may, in itself, the fact that the city would save money seems like a responsibility that the city has to the taxpayers, to take advantage of something like this. But probably more important than any of these is the idea of some degree of local control. That I hear from PG&E once a month, they don't really want a lot of feedback from me, other than the check to pay the bill. They have investors that they're accountable for, to, not necessarily their customers. And even, even if they become just a transmission company, even if that's all they do, they have the Public Utility Commission, and bankruptcy lawyers, and judges to take care of that, and that may cause our rates to go up, and it's likely to happen, that the cost of transmission, if PG&E begins to lose these excess profits that they're making off the electrical purchases, they will then have to raise the rates. We don't have a backup, we can't go to somebody else's poles and wires, so I believe they will be protected. They're not going to vanish, and our rates will go up because of that. Our rates will go up because of that, whether Santa Maria chooses to find some other organization to broker the actual electricity for us, or whether we pay the higher price from PG&E. So I think as time goes on, we're going to see rate increases because of the cost of transmission. We need to help our residents offset that by the actual cost of the electricity, which we've clearly seen, here's an organization that can broker it at a savings, partly because of efficiencies, partly because of the timing of the market, and also their nonprofit. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dennis. Elizabeth Schneider, followed by Roy Reed.
Good evening again. I'll be very brief, because everything that I have to say, everybody's already said. I think it's a win-win-win. The atmosphere wins, your constituents win, the city wins, the big businesses win, and local control, I think, is something we all strive for, because Lord knows, there are so many things we can't control. Let's take control when we have the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Roy Reed.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm Roy Reed. I'm a resident of Santa Maria, also a PG&E ratepayer. The presentation we saw tonight reminded me of the 30 years I spent in the pharmaceutical business, many of them training on hiring salespeople. Kind of our saying then, is an expert was a salesman who traveled more than 30 miles and brought slides or PowerPoints. And we did see quite a performance. I might have even hired him, I think he'd have been a great rep. But getting down to what's at hand, heard a lot of interesting statements. First, the euphemism that their program, their CCE, is an opt-out model, which is a euphemism for the fact that subscribers are forced to enroll in a system that they may well not enroll in, had it been exposed and they viewed it in the light of day. Another thing he said is that they do a lot of training and educating and indoctrinating people on the benefits of the plan. I would suggest their time would be far better spent with that indoctrination to occur before they were automatically enrolled in the plan, to give transparency to the entire process, particularly before you were forced to make the decision to act on behalf of all these unwitting subscribers. So I think the thing that's very obvious tonight, and even based on your questions and understanding, that we're in no position for you to take the action to advance this first reading to another meeting, where you could possibly approve the second reading and start the ball ruling. I think transparency and the respect to members of the community that Mayor Patino mentioned demands far greater examination of this program before you take action. Also, the presenter's assertion that you need to act fast so that they could meet their timetable, sounds to me a lot like a car salesman saying, "What'll it take for you to drive this rig off the lot today?" I think this is a very serious act. It may ultimately be a benefit, have a positive benefit. I don't think the question may be, is a CCE the right decision? I think the real choice is, is this program the right one? I don't think we have an adequate amount of information for you to make that decision tonight, and I would recommend you set this aside until such time that the community has the ability to make an informed decision and give you their input. And the fact that the only people at this meeting are people that are members of organizations that tell them to be here, along with Andy and I, is an indication that the community at large is in an informational vacuum relative to this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Andy Caldwell.
Mayor Patino, Andy Caldwell, representing COLAB. You have to dissect what the salesman said very carefully. Their competitive edge is there's no profit. It's a quote-unquote "nonprofit governmental entity." Their second competitive edge, industrial-scale solar doesn't pay property tax. So here's the deal. PG&E is a member of ours, and so is Southern California Gas and other, you know, oil and gas companies, things like that. When this first came up to the county, I used to call PG and ask them to come down. There wasn't a presentation by Monterey Power. They were not allowed to come. Their words is they are under a gag order. That's why they're not here. They don't come, they will not come. And so I became a, not an expert, but learned more about it than I ever wanted to. Here's the deal. What this does, this collapses the franchise model that allowed utility providers to spend hundreds of millions, if not billions of dollars, securing, secure energy sources. It collapsed the franchise model, and it also collapsed vertical integration. And so this is why, we talked about the Hourglass project. This is one of two of the states in the heart of Diablo Canyon. So San Luis Obispo County is going to lose $20 million a year in property taxes, and the region is going to lose $1 billion in economic activity, because community choice will not subscribe to nuclear. They won't subscribe to oil and gas either. What is that going to do to our local economy? You have to look at this big picture. They presented absolutely no risks on this program. Not one risk. Your staff report, not one downside, as if it's all return and no risk. That is too good to be true, Councilman Cordero. So did they tell you that right now, California is generating so much solar during the day that we have to pay Arizona to take it? We don't sell it to Arizona, we have to pay Arizona to take it. PG&E has already got a 79% greenhouse-gas-free energy portfolio, and as Councilman mentioned, Waterfield, any customer right now can opt for 100% solar. So you don't have to do this to save the planet. What they're basically doing is saying profit is bad, we want to edge PG&E out of vertical integration, out of the franchise model, because we're in the government and we can do it better. They're talking about millions of dollars as if that's a big thing. Energy distribution and acquiring energy is tens of billions of dollars. These guys are literally leeches on the end of PG&E's transmission lines, thinking that no matter what happens to those lines and the investment needed, they're going to keep, they're going to run risk-free. Madam Chair, I don't know if I can get extra time, because they've got 10 to 15 minutes on this.
Madam Chair, I would ask that you would request, because I need more information in regards to this, and I think we're getting information that we haven't heard before, and so I would like to have Mr. Caldwell.
Go ahead, Mr. Caldwell.
Thank you, and I will not abuse that courtesy. Again, what's happening right now is the investor-owned utilities, PG&E's got Northern California, Edison has most of Southern California, then San Diego, they're spreading risk to 40 million people, because this is a risky business. They have people with PhDs in a consortium of, I think, 11 western states trying to figure out our grid. These guys come along and think, hey, we can go 100% renewable, no risk, all return, and we're going to be able to do it cheaper. And PG&E has to spend billions of dollars in lawsuits, and billions of dollars hardening their transmission lines, that's not going to cost our customers anything. Folks, there is no such thing as a free watt, just like there's no such thing as a free lunch. And here's the worst part, this is the one thing they never want to tell you. Solar and wind are intermittent energy sources. They produce, wind only produces in a very, very few places that produces enough wind. Solar, most of California, you can do solar all over the place, but it only generates a maximum load between like 10 and 2. Early in the morning, it's not much, late in the afternoon, it's not much. So what do you do with the rest of the day? Where do these guys deliver power from the rest of the day and the night? Well, that's called base load. Base load, nuclear, hydroelectric, oil and gas, coal. So that's why I call them leeches. They're pretending they can satisfy all our energy needs, but they only produce a few hours a day. Renewables only produce a few hours a day. The other 10 to 20 hours, you have to have a backup source of base load, and the question is, who runs that? They're not doing it. And in fact, they refuse to buy power, they technically refuse to buy power from the ones that do. They pretend they're doing renewable 24 hours a day, but that's not possible, because they can't store the power. You know, they never fully disclose all the costs, including the loss of property-tax dollars from the utilities, plus the profits of utilities that get what? It gets taxed. So the state of California and their locations, such as San Luis Obispo, they were paying taxes to the locals and taxes to state, that all goes away. And these guys who are run by government entities think, oh, who needs tax dollars? It's not a real-world scenario. They're trying to get a free ride on the infrastructure, and they're trying to pretend they're not ever going to have to pay for the increased costs of the grid. And the grid, as I mentioned, needs an infusion of tens of billions of dollars. And you know, the bottom line here is Diablo became a white elephant. There were two things that killed Diablo, one had nothing to do with relicensing and earthquake faults. The one thing is the state passed a rule that all of these coastal energy facilities, nuclear or otherwise, had to return the water to the ocean at ambient temperature, which would have cost billions of dollars. The second thing was the white elephant perspective on this, that they weren't going to buy nuclear power, so they would have been operating a plant with nobody to sell the power to. And yet, nuclear power is greenhouse-gas emission-free, and it's actually pollution-free. There are no smokestacks at Diablo. And 80% of the recycled, of the fuel, the quote-unquote "spent" fuel can be recycled, but unfortunately, Jimmy Carter, a long time ago, prohibited that. So most of the problems with Diablo would go away if, in fact, we had a change in the law, and secondly, these people admitted that it's greenhouse-gas-free and pollution-free. Bottom line is what we have right now is a public-private partnership, franchise model, vertically-integrated, that has worked well for decades. And these people, really, what the, the original root of this thing was not to save customers' money, because for instance, our county board of supervisors wasn't going to go cheaper than PG&E, they were going to take the money and spend it on local green stuff. They weren't giving the customers a break at all, and some of these jurisdictions don't. The bottom line here is what this was, was a push. California said, "We're going to do 50% renewables, I think, by 2030, and 100% by 2045." These communities in the Bay Area who can, want to be greener than anybody else, said, "That's not fast enough. We want to go around the mandates and get there quicker," even though, like I said, PG&E has that option right now. The bottom line is this thing is going to collapse under its own weight eventually, because there is no free watt, there is no free grid without any risks, you know, and it's all return. So thank you very much. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions?
So Andy, would the future be that eventually, I would lose my gas stove?
Okay, that's a whole nother. So, send, now, this is again.
I'm serious, though.
Pedal to the metal. This last week, I went down to Oxnard to testify to the state PUC commission. They are considering a rule that would require all residences and businesses to replace their natural gas appliances with electric. Because again, they can't get to zero decarbonization fast enough. And again, what they don't realize, you plug something into a wall socket, that doesn't make it green. We share power. The one thing he said that was true was all the power gets dumped into this pool. That includes coal. 63% of America's energy is generated by fossil fuels, 33% by coal. You plug something into a wall, that doesn't make it green. It depends on where the power was generated. California tries to lay claim to all this green power, but again, it's all mixed into the pool, and the rest of the states are not following our lead. So that is another thing, is them pushing that. And here's the deal. You want to talk about Councilman Soto, the poor people in Santa Maria. Electricity has risen three times as fast. Natural gas prices have actually helped us meet our carbon emission standards, we're the only industrialized country in the world that has actually reduced our carbon footprint as a result of natural gas, which burns cleaner and is much, much cheaper than electricity. Your people, right? Your people right now are going to have a huge problem paying $7,200 to convert to all electricity and then their bills are going to go up through the roof again because these guys are leeching onto the utilities and they're collapsing their profit motive.
Thank you. Any questions?
I'm afraid to ask the question.
Can we go on to discussion?
No, that was good information.
Okay. Any questions?
Oh, I do.
Okay.
There was, there was a comment that was made saying that the energy can only be produced only a few hours per day.
Do you know how solar works?
I'd like to hear from.
Yes, please. Go to the podium.
So, we don't hide from our power mix. As I saw on the slide, 33% of it comes from renewable sources, the other 67 comes from large hydroelectric sources. That's our baseline. So we are trying, we are trying to match kind of the load curve. If you want to get super technical, we have to balance on the second, the 15-second, the minute, the hourly basis to make sure that our customers effectively, the power gets dispatched on the grid virtually the same time. That, the whole state of California is doing that on an hourly basis. So we don't, we're not trumpeting the fact that like all our sources come from wind and solar because as the gentleman said, yes, they're intermittent. So they only come on at certain times a day. And so part of the reason is, is like we need to make sure that we're not just trumpeting that thing, we're trumpeting a lower-cost mix of fuels that can match the consumption of our customers. That's what we're presenting to you. Not some kind of magic fly-by-the-seat-of-your-pants, oh, wind and sun are going to, you know, fix everything. They're a part of a diverse mix of portfolio. Geothermal's another baseline fuel, biogas is another baseline fuel, nuclear is also another baseline fuel, which 100% is greenhouse gas-free. As the gentleman said, there are a lot of reasons why Diablo Canyon's shutting down. I mean, again, we don't procure from that. That doesn't necessarily mean that it's not, that it should not be a part of the mix of California. But again, that's out of our control. So I think at the end of the day, we just want to present that particular case to everyone and, again, we respect, these are shared customers. And the vertically-integrated system may have worked, but at the end of the day, your electricity prices have skyrocketed over the last 10 years. If you look at the cost per therm of natural gas, from October until now, it's gone up So when people call and complain about their bills, we have to walk them through the natural gas part and they go, well, what happened six months ago when it was a dollar a therm? Now it's a dollar 30 a therm? That's what's taking over the bill for them. So I just want to make sure that like, natural gas prices, they fluctuate just like everything else does. There could be a disruption in the Northwest. There's a whole myriad of sources, as the gentleman said. We're a part of the Western Energy Coordinated Council of 11 states that all have to balance electricity throughout the region. So, hope that helps.
Any other questions, Ms. Soto?
None.
Okay. Bring this back to the council for discussion, motion, whatever. Oh, Mr. Wyss Miller?
Thank you. I took first sixth in high school and we were taught to speak at a certain volume and pitch to make sure we were very persuasive and I'm just too old to do that anymore. So I hope you'll bear with my things.
Did it work?
At times it did, it can be very moving. The bottom line, I, well, staff remains with its recommendation to you as a citizen, just to respond to a couple of things. I'm a, I'm a big fan, so it's difficult for me to counter some of the statements that were made. But the fact is, the situation with Diablo Canyon and the advent of nuclear power isn't changing because we're asking what we're doing tonight. And I disagree with the characterization of it being leeching. Right now, it's what the, what the legislation and the marketplace have pointed us toward is to come up with solutions that are going to help our citizens to have a more affordable utility bill. So with that, I won't get into the great detail of hitting point after point, but there is a good upside for the community and for the city to be able to proceed. So we remain with our, and by the way, in our discussion with the, with the chamber yesterday morning, they too were in support and they saw the advantages that were going not just to residences, but particularly to businesses and those businesses that have high energy bills because they can be impactful on their bottom line as well. So we do recommend the approval of joint, becoming, signing on to the Joint Powers Authority. We'd ask you to adopt that resolution and also to introduce an ordinance for the first reading that engages the city in community choice aggregation. The issues that were brought up just are not being changed, have not changed and are not changing because of the actions we're being asked to do tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Either Pat or you can answer this question, whoever knows. And that is, I know this is, I know this is time-sensitive to some degree. What is the time-sensitive issue and, or what is the time that we have to deal with this?
Yeah, and the very fair question. So the, the time we have is basically by the middle of August. Our recommendation is that folks have had their second reading done by the middle of August so that we could compile all of that and then submit that to our policy board, which would then approve the membership applications from each of the cities or the counties that were interested. And I just want to pivot back to the question about enrollment and outreach. You know, part of civil society is being, is tuning into city council meetings and being a part of this and keeping tabs on what city council is doing. It's also part of, you know, the cities and the councils and the townies also having an obligation to educate and do outreach. But again, this is all done in a public setting. The idea of folks being, you know, the wool, being pulled over their eyes, we've, I mean, again, 19 other community choice agencies have enrolled a population of over 10 million people in the last nine years. Again, a lot of folks aren't going to hear about it, but once our enrollment will start with developing an outreach plan for this whole region and doing workshops well before the enrollment happens, and this is a long-going process in terms of this engagement about this subject matter. So it's not something that we just, when a city votes, we just pull their hands up and be like, that's fine, we're done. We're going to send the mailers out and we're going to work with the chamber, other nonprofit organizations, community-based organizations to kind of educate them and hopefully have, as you say in Spanish, promotores, that could actually come down here and help kind of collaborate locally to make sure that residents and businesses know about it and it comes from someone they trust as opposed to someone like us. So we're very seasoned in outreach and we're very supportive of that. So I just wanted to get back to that.
You know, I guess if, you know, this is a lot of material to process and it seems like you would have come to do the outreach in our community first because I agree, I think it's, it sounds very, very good and you feel like maybe it's too good to be true. And I think we have to respond to how our community feels about something like this and they don't really know about it. And so there's not any, it seems like the outreach would have been done first before it comes to us to make, make that kind of a decision.
May I, Madam Mayor?
Sure. Ms. Soto?
Is there anything else that you needed to add?
No, I was just going to say, yeah, I mean, we're here tonight to provide that information and then whichever way the council takes the direction, we can certainly provide information to continually have this dialogue.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to point out to some of the comments that I heard earlier this evening regarding this CCE. As it was mentioned, at the last city council meeting, we just approved a solar array here in the city of Santa Maria. This is an opportunity for us to really put the residents of our city first before large corporations or entities like PG&E. This is an opportunity for us to help them save dollars, save some money. And it's also an opportunity for us as a city to also save some money. As you know, right now, the city of Santa Maria, we just passed Measure U because we were in a, were in a deficit. And so this is an opportunity for us to, to have major cost savings for the city of Santa Maria. And I just, I would hate for us to completely dismiss this opportunity. I think that it's, it's, you know, just hearing all of the information, it's very, very low risk. And as I heard at the last city council meeting when we were discussing LAFCO, this is an opportunity for us to have local control over how we purchase our energy source. Our job is not to protect the best, the interest of PG&E, our job is to protect the interest of the residents of Santa Maria. And when I hear that businesses, local small mom-and-pop businesses are going to be really the ones where, they're going to be benefiting as well as the agricultural industry, that's definitely, I'm a huge proponent of that. I mean, $2.4 million that, I mean, it says specifically, the commercial and agriculture sectors received $2.4 million and $800,000 respectively in bill savings. Again, and then $4.4 million to consumers in the calendar year of 2018 and that's only expected to increase. Having so many other cities join into this, to the CCE really demonstrates the fact that again, this is low-risk, it's well-established. And hearing also the recommendation of the staff and knowing that they did their due diligence, I am in supportive of this as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments?
If the second reading needs to be done by August and it still may, if the second reading needs to be done by August and it still may, there's plenty of opportunity to revisit this. So if we decide to defer it tonight, it's not cataclysmic. I think we need to think of some of the benefits of PG&E too. Look at all the property tax they pay to the local county government. Look at all the income tax they pay to the state and federal government. The dividends they give to their shareholders are taxed. And you know, that's not considered. I mean, granted that the individual rates may be lower on the consumer, but there's a lot of tax money going to the government that we wouldn't get taxed on. You know, they would, the government wouldn't be at shortage of money quite so much with all the tax revenue they're getting from PG&E. And I just have a natural inclination to think that things that are too good to be true probably aren't. So I'm not convinced. It sounds really great, but, and then there's this other thing from the county of Santa Barbara wants to run its own and they're asking us to defer making a decision tonight too. I think there's just a lot of things that, you know, we could defer it for, you know, a couple of council meetings. So I think I'd be in favor of deferring it.
Okay. One minute. Ms. Waterfield?
This is, this has all been so educational and so very interesting in such a short period of time, but there still is a lot of information that we don't know. I do not want to disenfranchise our thousands and thousands of residents out there that may not even want us to go in this direction. We've done workshops on different situations with H2A. When I came here in 1985, we were discussing state water because it had to do with the rates, it had to do with the quality. That went to the vote of the people. That was very important. We just discussed fluoride tonight and how we discussed that for two years because we needed to get all the research and everything going on that. So that, that has been brought back in front of us. And then they want us to make a decision on this tonight, just when this just comes before us, on, on a concept that hasn't even been proven to be safe and economical for the residents of California. The more and more people that jump onto this system, the slower, the slower in my mind it's going to get. When I saw, you know, and I've got to be totally honest, when I listened to how good this was from the gentleman and when I read this and there was nothing bad about it, no disrespect to you, Patrick, because you know I respect you, my mind strictly went to the Garden of Eden when the snake said, take a bite of this fruit and we'll all enjoy the fruits and the knowledge and the wisdom of everything. And then we saw how it all tumbled down. This scares me because it's, that's that fruit, this is that apple that you're asking us to take a bite of and we don't really know what it's all about. And so I, I do not want to make a decision on this tonight in favor of moving forward. I think we need to have workshops. We need to let the people of the city of San Maria come and talk about what's going on. I could care less about the August deadline. This is going to take time to discuss and to find out more research of what's going on. So I stand with the mayor and with Councilmember Moats on this, but I'm not going forward.
Mr. Cordero?
Well, I guess I was the first one to mention that, is it true? And I think at the bare minimum, we should wait and find out what the county has to offer and what we can learn that, from them that we don't, what we don't know now. I don't think that we should cast this aside at all by any stretch of the imagination. But I do think there's a bit more learning to take place. And I, for one, am very concerned about the August deadline because if we're going to go with something like this, we won't be able to do it for another year. And X number of millions of dollars that would have been saved has been lost for this year. So I think it's very important that we, we expedite this as, as much as we can so that we can make a better informed decision. But I do favor waiting at least until the county lets us know what they have in mind.
Did we have any kind of a deadline on the county, on that, on that letter we received?
It just said within weeks.
Within weeks. Okay. Excuse me, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm, I don't know why, but I spoke to Joan Hartman's office this morning and I believe they said that it may be within the next week or so that they should hear something. So I would, I would hate for us to completely roll this, joining a CCE, CCE out.
We're not doing that.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're not doing that. If we need more time to study, I think, or to learn more about it, I want, I want us to be open to that, but I also want us to, to have an idea of when we would be bringing this back.
Well, I, could you contact the originator of the letter to find out what kind of a timeline?
I'd be happy to. This was the first I've.
Oh, okay.
Heard, heard tonight when that was shared.
And I would really like to even consider pushing this to a vote of the city of Santa Maria for all the residents so they can make their own individual choice. Because this is such an important issue that's going to affect each and everybody's life and they should be able to make that own personal choice. So however long it takes to get it on the ballot, I think that's, that's the way I would like to see it go. And we would definitely get both sides of the story by then, so.
So we cannot have PG&E coming here and talking to us and that we would ask them questions?
I'll reach out to a rep and see if they're willing to come in and talk. And I'm just not sure how they're going to interpret it and it's a legal issue and so, you know, careful, I'm not going to, I'm not going to make a pronouncement on a legal interpretation on that.
Certainly.
And Andy, you know the, a lot of the state people too, you might inquire about if PG&E can come in.
Is there been that decent vote?
Okay. Okay. But could you make the request, Patrick, on that and then we can find out?
I certainly will.
And can you let us know that?
From the, the letter from the county and what they meant and when we can expect anything to come from them? Okay.
We have been working with the county and they're at the point of doing a feasibility study draft and we'll talk to them and see where they are. The reason we brought forward the Monterey Bay Consortium because it's an actual, it's past the feasibility study draft, it's an actual working operation that works well for cities that are similarly situated as ours, but we will circle back with the county as well.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask one more question of you? Among your experiences discussing this with city councils, what's the acceptance rate at the first presentation? Is it high or are we outliers now? Is it high, or are we outliers now?
No, and I think the conversation and the dialogue that the five of you having is important, and it's totally fair. I think, you know, it just varies. Some city councils, when they hear it, are just all about it. Some of them get skeptical, but, you know, I've been at city council meetings where we discussed this for two hours, and then after, at the end of it, they felt confident about it. You know, we've, it's a little different because what's been happening in San Luis Obispo County is we started outreach back in January, and because you had two cities, San Luis Obispo and Morro Bay, joining on, there had always been coverage about it. And the thing is, Santa Barbara County's been investigating with San Luis Obispo County and Ventura County. They tried to launch a tri-county community choice program, wasn't feasible. Ventura splintered off, and now they join Clean Power Alliance. So now you're left with Santa Barbara in the middle of kind of Clean Power Alliance and then Monterey Bay Committee Power, just because as we're bringing down and recruiting, engaging the rest of the cities of San Luis Obispo County. So I think it's just a, it just depends on just kind of the general understanding about it. And the thing is, is I don't think it's new, it's not necessarily something that came out of nowhere. I mean, with 19 other agencies serving almost a third of the California population, we're here, and we're delivering benefits. And so it's just a matter of, we're certainly supportive of whatever direction you take. I think at the end of the day, we're just supportive that you folks do want to move forward with a program that meets your needs. So whether it's, you know, waiting for the county to do it, or waiting to move forward with us, I think at the end of the day, we're just supportive that the city would want to provide a particular opportunity like this for its residents and businesses.
Well, I think that we all want to provide service and products for our community at the best price. So it sort of seems like a no-brainer in a way, but I always, I'm cautious about no-brainer issues, so.
Yeah, I mean, I would say, you know, I've got a six-month-old and a three-year-old, and I would say I'm kind of going towards that spectrum of no-brainers. If it looks good, I'm going to have faith in that, because I'd rather, you know, move forward in my life with optimism, I hope that things are going to work out, because if, we're always just kind of scared of things. Again, everyone's investigated this, left, right, and center. Again, this is the first time you've heard about it, I completely respect where you're coming from, in terms of ensuring that your residents and businesses understand about this. But it's something that has been vetted by cities and counties of all political spectrums, socioeconomic classes. It's been vetted left, right, and center by 170 different local governments across the state of California. So all of the questions that you're bringing up have been mentioned before, they're all reasonable concerns, it's just a matter of finding comfort in the fact that you're not the first to do it, you're not the last to do it, but you are a part of a movement that is happening in the state of California. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, excuse me, you have direction. Okay, thank you. Now, we have our last regular business item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will consider the quarterly financial report for the third quarter ending March 31, 2019, and budget amendments to approve personnel and operational changes in the 2018-19 budget.
A staff report is to be made by Director of Finance, Ms. Harvey.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, and the public. Tonight I will briefly present the quarterly financial report for the third quarter ended March 31, 2019. I will be primarily reviewing the general fund and enterprise funds. The beginning fund balance of nearly $10,072,000 is the unaudited balance at July 1, 2018. Concerning city revenues through the third quarter of the year, sales tax receipts are 5.9% greater than the third quarter last fiscal year. The majority of the variance is attributed to the new businesses at Enos Ranch that have enhanced sales in consumer goods and restaurants. NHIS revenues are about $1.1 million, which is a decrease of 17.8% as compared to the $1.3 million in receipts received through the third quarter of last year. Most of the NHIS material was received during the first six months of 2018-19 and came from Chevron's San Luis Obispo tank farm project. NHIS activity in the third quarter was limited to a small amount of material received in January from Vandenberg Air Force Base projects. However, Chevron's San Luis Obispo tank farm project started hauling material again in April and is expected to continue through mid-June. Based on the expected project activities, staff anticipates NHIS revenues to reach about $1.3 million by the end of June. Hotel and bed tax receipts through March are down about $83,000 compared to last year and are falling short of estimates by about $491,000, or 13.7%. The decrease is due to a combination of higher occupancy levels occurring last year to accommodate first responders and evacuees affected by natural disasters, and an increase in hostels in neighboring communities. Permit revenue is at approximately $1.7 million, or 67.7% of budget, and $300,000 less than received during the same period last year. The permits issued in the previous year for Enos Ranch development is the main reason for the decrease in revenues. General fund expenditures are at $52 million, or 67.9% of budget. Overall, departments are under budget by $5.2 million, with vacancies and incomplete contracts accounting for roughly $2.3 million of those budget savings, and duplicate positions accounting for about $2.7 million. After adjusting budgets for the duplicate positions, departments are on track to realize about $2.5 million in salary savings to help address the budget deficit. However, our expenditures are still expected to exceed our revenue estimates by about $2.4 million. Turning to Measure U, first, I would like to remind the council and the audience that this report reflects the original Measure U quarter cent sales tax. Revenues through the third quarter are ahead of budget at 75.9%, or $3.8 million. Expenditures are at 56.9% of budget, or $3.6 million. The fire department is under budget due to pending orders of a fire truck and station alerting system totaling $1.1 million. Police Measure U budgets are overstated by about $513,000 as a result of three duplicate positions included in the budget. Taking these two factors into account, overall Measure U expenditures are slightly over budget at 76.3%. Through the first nine months of the physical year, overall Measure U revenues exceeded expenditures by $125,000, increasing fund balance to about $441,000. Through March, 89% of all Measure U expenditures were spent on public safety activities, with 37% expended on fire operations and 52% expended on police operations. Staff will present to council estimates for the new Measure U, the full one-cent sales tax, next month with the 2019-20 mid-cycle budget. As for the enterprise funds, the water and wastewater funds revenues exceeded expenditures by $1.8 million. Expenditures included total semi-annual debt service payments of $4.6 million on the 2012 refunding bonds. For the solid waste fund, revenues exceeded expenditures by nearly $1.3 million. Operating costs are about 3%, or $500,000 greater than the prior year. The transit fund revenues outpaced expenditures by about $24,000. Fairs revenues through March are just over $614,000, and the fare box ratio is 30.9%. In conjunction with the third quarter financial report, staff recommends two budget amendments for council's consideration. That concludes my staff report, and I'm happy to answer any questions council may have.
Any questions of the council?
So, Enos helped us a lot, along with the increase in the sales tax for this quarter.
Yeah, Enos has really brought in a lot of additional revenue for, in the consumer goods in particular.
Absolutely, no, absolutely. And so then, you'll probably see a little bit more growth at the end of this quarter when we end the fiscal period and get going on that. So I just got to say a great big thank you to the residents of the City of Santa Maria for pushing Measure U and allowing this to go through, because without them, this, we wouldn't have seen any of this. So thank you to all of them for this.
Any questions to the council?
When would we need to start looking, when will we approve next fiscal year's budget?
We'll be presenting that in the second meeting in June, so June 2018? 18, almost.
Okay, do we have any written correspondence? Oh, I'm sorry, did you have another question?
Yes. So tonight, we heard comments about fluoride and poisoning our water, and so, do you know how much it is costing the city? How much, what's the cost to the city annually to add fluoride? $55,000?
$55,000.
And one of...
Because I think we ended it a few years ago.
Last October.
I think the budget reduction was $55,000 or somewhere thereabouts.
Is there any way that we would be able to see, would we be able to see, would we be able to add that cost to next year's budget?
We could certainly look at that.
Well, something we have to discuss here and talk about, if we want to do that or not.
Yeah, when are we going to adjourn this?
We haven't decided that.
We need to agree to put it on the agenda, which we probably all agree to.
Would we, would it be something that we would approve through the budget? Is this something that we would approve through the budget?
Sure. It could be approved in the budget, or it could be approved separately, and an additional appropriation could be done at that time. So it could be at either time.
Would we be able to then, so I guess what I'm asking is, can, when you, can you have it at the next budget? Thank you. The cost, the cost for fluoride added to the water, can that be in the budget for, and then that way, we can move it forward that way?
We can certainly add it into the budget.
Great, thank you.
It needs to be agendized so we can discuss it before it gets into the budget. Okay.
Oh, so, okay.
So I heard two things there. One was include it in the budget, and the other, bring it back as a separate item? We can do either.
Yeah, and the reason, and the reason why I ask is because the way that we removed the fluoride, or the way that the council removed the fluoride back in October, was through the budget. We didn't have a separate agenda item, so then that means that the process can remain the same. Right? So I think that if, at this point, we can just include it that way and leave it open for public comment.
Okay, well, I think it should, I think it needs to be discussed and approved.
Yeah, it has, yeah, it has to be agendized.
Okay. And it was, it was removed as a cost-saving measure, and so I think it needs to be discussed, and then we approve it, and it can be put into the agenda, I mean, into the budget.
Can we, can we wait until we hear what Dr. Mo, what Cordero has to say? Because he stepped out. No, no, it doesn't. It doesn't have to be agendized. It can be part of, incorporated with the budget, and that's how it would be in the agenda, because that's how we removed it.
Well, don't we have to hear the people that use fluoride in the water?
It's up to you. I mean, it's, as part of the budget, it'll be, you can put it back in, but I also hear that you want to have more public input than just having it included in the budget, so you could have it as a separate item.
Actually, I don't care about public input.
Need your microphone. Turn on your microphone, please.
We could do that and avoid public input, and we wouldn't have to listen to crazy people telling us why they're poisoning our water.
Yeah. And I just want to remain to how the process was done originally, and so if we can just include it, and obviously, today, we heard a large number of people coming and speaking in favor of adding fluoride to the water.
So how do you make a decision, you're, we're talking about making a decision right now that's not been agendized, and that is, we shouldn't be doing that.
May I speak, Madam Mayor?
Sure.
Thank you.
You're the one we want to hear.
Yes, we're, 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 you're moving into a discussion on the merits of fluoride, and that's not appropriate at this time, but it's fine to indicate how you want it to come back on the budget, and we're in the context of a budget discussion, so there's some leeway. But I do suggest that when we include that in the description of the budget, a proposal to include, an optional proposal to include fluoride going forward, so that you have the freedom, you need to discuss it as part of the budget exercise.
That'll be fine.
I'm ready.
Okay, he's, he's ready. Do we have any correspondence or requests to speak?
No, Madam Mayor, we do not.
Oh, my goodness. No one out there wanted to speak on this? Okay, I'll bring it back to the council.
Madam Mayor, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Are we going to agendize rent control at some point? How's the negotiation going with that?
You know, we've been talking about it, and I'm not, yeah, and I don't know where we are on the negotiations yet.
We've been, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Moats, we've been meeting regularly with both the mobile home park owners and the homeowners, and at the last meeting, all in attendance agreed to work towards enforceable rent control 2020, and that would be a model agreement to use for the next decade that could be enforceable and create a structure for the mobile home parks in the city and adjacent to the city.
And everyone was in favor of that?
No one was against it.
Is one of the mobile home parks going to increase the rent by 10% like the witness told us, so as to get our rents on par with other similar communities?
You know what?
You know, Madam Mayor, I mean, we're definitely getting way off.
We're getting way off.
This is an item on the third quarter budget report. We can, we can talk privately about the status of the mobile home park negotiations after the meeting.
Thank you for your interest, Dr. Moats. Okay. Okay, do I have a motion? Any further discussion?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to receive this report.
I want to say something.
That's okay, make a motion and get a second, and we can discuss.
Okay.
Okay.
I made that motion to receive and file this report for the third quarter ending March 31, 2020.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Cordero?
I was referring to the fluoride issue, but I don't know how that came out. I don't know, I was gone for a few minutes.
Okay, we can't discuss it, we're discussing right now, the discussion right now is on the resolution to approve the amendments to the budget.
Okay, I'm ready to vote.
Okay, fine. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Councilmember Waterfield.
Yes.
Councilmember Moats.
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero.
Aye.
Councilmember Soto.
Aye.
Madam Mayor, please.
Aye.
Next item will be a report by City Manager, Mr. Stowell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I want to remind the council and the viewing public that June 1 is the Elks Rodeo Parade, and then the next meeting of the City Council is June 4, and we plan to bring back the H2A ordinance at that meeting, which, to comply with the direction the council provided in April. And that'll be the main item on the agenda on June 4. And that concludes my report.
Oral reports of council members?
I'll start.
To start with you?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On Wednesday, May 8, I attended the 2019 Business and Education Partnership Luncheon. That same day, I attended the Third Annual KETA Town Hall meeting at the Boys and Girls Club. On Thursday, May 9, I heard a presentation, oh, I attended the ATP meeting, community meeting, that was, that was so much fun, I'm excited for that. On, what was? Oh, Wednesday, May 15, the annual police memorial ceremony, and I know I'm here today.
You're here today?
Right now.
Okay, Madam Mayor, on Tuesday, May 7, I was the guest speaker at the Santa Maria Association of Realtors, then attended the Hope Mission Luncheon, was fundraiser for cancer patients. On Thursday, May 8, I had a meeting with the Hourglass Regional Economic People. I also attended a former owner of Coast Rock, which was... I also attended a former owner of Coast Rock, which was, which was previous Cal Coast Rock, Randy Hermerick's funeral. On, let's see, on Monday, May 13, I met Wilhelma Contreras. She is the partners in Karing, executive directors for Partner and Karing. Then I went and attended the Battles Elementary School, where they were doing a completely facelift. A C&amp;D Aerospace, which was renamed, oh my gosh, it's on the tip of my tongue. Anyway, they went in and their employees and the CEO was just painting beautiful murals on the walls. They've updated the whole entire school with wall, with wall murals, painted the playground, just did so many great things, and the kids were so excited about what was going on with their school. They thought that was fantastic. I also attended the annual police memorial ceremony, which was very touching. And then on Friday, May 17, I got to step in, Jim Glines, Jim Glines and I got to step in for Steve and Larry Labanino on the KSMA radio with Rick Leymeyer, and that was so much fun. I mean, oh my gosh, I couldn't believe talking for an hour seemed like five minutes just went by. Then later that afternoon, I attended the Central Coast Air Fest kickoff. And Monday, yesterday, I attended the ringing of the bell for the firefighters and their golf tournament, and the start of their golf tournament, which was very nice. And chief champion, you guys did a great job yesterday at that golf tournament, and you had a great group out there, and your boys did a good job, so thank you very much for that. That's it.
Dr. Moots.
Well, on May 8, I did the Ben Hayes Show, recapping last week's city council meeting. On the 11th, I attended the major fundraiser for the Santa Maria Noontime Rotary Club, known as the Barn Party, representing the city, of course. And last, last week, I attended the Humane Society Dinner out at the facility on Stowell. And that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Cordaro.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On the 8th, I attended the Business Education Luncheon at the Fairgrounds, which is always a fun event to see these kids get their computers. On the same day, I also attended the confidential chamber press release out at the, out at the Coach Hill Building, and it was exciting to hear that AT Still University is coming to town. I had been wondering about it, and in fact, while I was sitting there, I asked Jason, I said, "Whatever happened to that medical facility coming here?" And he says, "This is them." And there was a sign there that said, "AT Still University," and I didn't even see it. So, but it is a very exciting, exciting time to be on the council and have something like this take place.
Mr. Cordaro, you didn't know why you were there?
They said it was a confidential news.
And you weren't told?
Okay.
So then, it's just an exciting time to be on the council. On the 9th, I attended a, the Hourglass briefing at the city hall, and that strikes me as something that has a lot of room to grow and approach things from a regional standpoint. And on the 13th and 14th, I attended the gang conference prevention program down in Long Beach, which was also very, very good, and I think that we come back with a lot of good information. And on the 15th, I attended the annual police memorial, and I know I've said this before, I'm sure I said this last year, that the police memorial here in Santa Maria comes from very, very humble beginnings. Right out here, basically this flagpole here was just a half a dozen or dozen chairs out there, and it's grown into something that is, I'm sure it's recognized throughout the state. It's just a real moving, emotional event to watch. Mark Strecker did a great job as the MC, and the speakers were great. It was, it was a pleasure to be there, an honor. On the 16th, I met with Eddie Taylor as the representative for United Way in interviewing a possible candidate for, to increase our board, and I think that if this all goes through, we'll have, we'll have really augmented our efficiency of our board of directors on the United Way. 17th, I attended the kickoff lunch at the Air Fest, and that sounds like it's going to be really exciting this, this year. It's going to be on October the 12th and 13th. It should be a really good show. On the 20th, I attended the Second Annual Golf Tournament put on by our fire department, and as has already been said, they did a great job, the dinner was great. The, for me as a first responder, the ringing of the bell was a bit emotional, and I think it was meant to be. I met with Joe Hassel that same day on the Cox Project, and on 421 this morning, I did the Ben Hayes Show for Mayor Patino, and, and I attended the open house at the Public Works Department today, and that's it.
Thank you, and thank you very much for doing the Ben Hayes Show for me this morning.
It was great to see Ben again. He always makes you feel very comfortable, as you know.
Oh, I know, he's great. May 8, I attended North County Subregional Meeting, which is held in solving, and I attended the Business and Education Partnership Luncheon at the Santa Maria Fair Park later that day. I also attended the confidential chamber press release at AT Still announcement, and that's very exciting to know that we have a medical school coming to, coming to town. That evening, I attended the Third Annual CADA Town Hall meeting at the Boys and Girls Club. On the 9th, I, I did the briefing with the Hourglass Regional Economic Development Project. That evening, I attended Pathways to Success Community Meeting at the Veterans, where there was a large gathering, extra-large gathering of the Wahakam families, and it was interesting, because they give you the little earpiece to, for the interpretation, and it was all in Wahakam. It was not in English or Spanish in the, in the earpiece, but I, anyway. On the 10th, I met, I met with Jose Hutron from the Santa Barbara Business College. That afternoon, I attended Santa Maria Veterans Treatment Court graduation ceremony at the County Government Center. On May, Bay 13th and 14th, I attended the Gang Prevention Intervention Congress Conference down in Long Beach. On the 15th, I attended the annual police memorial ceremony, and Mark Strecker did a wonderful job on, on that, and it was a very moving ceremony. And I've said before, I was, one time I was back in DC, where I attended the one in, in DC. On the 16th, I attended the SBAG Board of Directors meeting. In the afternoon, I attended the APCD Board meeting. On the May 17, I did Fighting Back Santa Maria Valley Board meeting, then attended the Central Coast Air Fest, Air Fest kickoff lunch, and as you said, Mr. Cordaro, it'll be in October, 12th and 13th, and that's, that's a fun time to be out there. Later that afternoon, I met with the Teen Advisory Committee from Santa Maria High, and then met with the Teen Advisory Committee from Pioneer High School. On the 20th, I met with Dr. Kevin Walters from Hancock College and attended the barbecue dinner auction and awards ceremony last night. This morning at 7:30, and I'm not a morning person, did the healthcare roundtable at Marion Regional Medical Center, attended Rotary, and went to the drug court commencement ceremony at the Veterans Community Center, and then attended the Scholarship Foundation Awards Ceremony at Hancock, and then I ran, ran home and got ready for meeting tonight, and that is it. Anything else from the dais? Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned.